Thank you. And would you please join me in the flex salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first, we are now at item five. First, I'll check in with the council and see if anyone has any reason to reorder anything this evening. Okay, then we will proceed as published. And I will turn it over to our city attorney for closed session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. So on February 13th, 2024, we did have a closed session item. The agenda description that's listed on tonight's agenda was read into the record at that time. And at that meeting on the 13th, following closed session, the city council adjourned at 9:54 PM, and there was no reportable action on the 13th.
Thank you very much. And for item 5B on ordinances, I will move that all ordinances presented at the meeting shall be read in title only, and all further readings be waived.
Second.
The motion is second. Can we get a voice vote, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. So that takes us right away to the fun stuff, special presentations. The first one is an honorary proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Women's History Month. And I will see at the podium Kathy La Martina and Linda Kind. Would you come up? It is exciting. Here, you can come over here. Make sure the camera gets you both. And they are representing the South County Historical Society. This is an honorary proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Women's History Month. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout history of our nation by providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. Whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Karen Rae Russom, Mayor of the City of Aurora Grande, do, I'm inserting enthusiastically, hereby designate March as Women's History Month, and call upon the residents of Aurora Grande to observe Women's History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And I invite you both to speak.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to say that there's another organization in our community, the American Association of University Women, that also celebrate Women's History Month. And some of the ladies dress in costume, and they take on the role of famous women in history. And they present a living history program to the students of the Lucia Marsh School District. So I didn't know if everybody was aware of that program.
I just want to say, this is for Harry Quimby and Rosario Cooper. And of course, the Paulding ladies, the teachers, which are so important to our society. So thank you for this. We will frame it and hang it so people can see it.
Thank you. Somebody's calling Jim and letting him know.
Thank you very much.
And I will say, as a history teacher, I can appreciate this so much. And sitting at a dais with three other fantastic women, sorry, Jim. And it is wonderful to serve with you all. And I will bring up that on the South County Sanitation District Board, it is my favorite part when our plant superintendent begins his presentation with ladies of the board. Because there are no gentlemen, anyway. All right, would anyone like to say anything? All right, then we will move on to 6B. This is City Manager Communications, Mr. Downing.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Matt Downing, City Manager. A couple of updates for you this evening. First and foremost, over the weekend, we did have the Meet the Machines event. We had over 1,000 people attend. I know I was there with my two children. We had, they didn't want to go at first, and then they ended up having a blast. So it was a lot of fun. We had over 20 different community partners there. And we did give out free goodie bags to the first 300 children who showed up. So that was a lot of fun. And we thank Recreation Services for their, for that activity. And then also, don't forget that we do let some bunny, yes, bunny, not buddy, let some bunny know that you love them by sending a bunny gram. So if you purchase a bunny gram, the Aurora Grande Bunny will personally deliver a basket of treats to an address in the Five Cities area. And if you'd like more information on that, contact the Recreation Services Department. Over in our city clerk's office, the Legislative and Information Services Department wanted to make the public aware that in an effort to continue to make the city's public meetings accessible, the city council and planning commission meetings will now be streamed through YouTube. So that's through the city's YouTube channel beginning tonight. I did have it on my screen, and it was working. It's a little delayed, but it's fine. So that's going well. And you'll be able to actually see it on our YouTube channel following the meeting as well. So that's where we'll be hosting those now on. And then we also have the city's survey miller that was sent to mailboxes in the city and also on the city's website. So we do want to hear from the public, as we've said before. And we are taking the survey all the way through March 31st. So if you got one of those in your mailbox, please feel free to fill it out, send it back, or go online and fill it in, or drop it off at City Hall. We're happy to take it. Our police department is very pleased to announce we have a new addition to the department. Officer Timothy Wilson began his field training officer program on Monday, and I got to meet him, actually happened to be in the police department when he was getting some gear. And so I got to meet him there. He will be formally sworn in and introduced to the council in the coming weeks. So we do anticipate that probably on the March 12th meeting, depending on his availability as well. And then for Five Cities Fire, wanted to note that former Chief Lieberman's last day was yesterday. And we are joined this evening by interim chief Keith Agson back in the back. And so we thank Keith for, Chief Agson, for filling in for the next two months. He'll be with us through April. We're doing the fire chief interview panels on Thursday and Friday of this week. So we're looking forward to getting somebody selected in that process and moving that on. And funny enough, on his first day off, I ran into Chief Lieberman at the grocery store earlier today. So that was fun. And then last, but certainly not least, I did want to commend our Administrative Services Director, Nicole Valentine, and our Finance Manager for, we received the meritorious award for fiscal year 2023 and '25 for our biennial budget document from the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. And my understanding is that is a first for us. So that was very exciting, and congratulations to them. And that concludes my comments this evening.
Outstanding. Let's see if the council has any questions. I just had one thing. I meant to, I left that survey, I got mine yesterday, and I left it on my counter, and I meant to bring it as a visual aid. Thank you. Can you pass that? I don't know if the camera will point it, Jessica.
Oh, I thought you were going to talk, and I was going to be Vanna.
Oh, you could be Vanna. But what I want you to see is there is a tear off for you to rank some of the things that we think you might be saying, and a place for you to fill in what we might not know you care about. And you can either put a snail mail stamp on that and give it back to us, or scan the QR code if you're cheap like me and you don't want to spend the money. So there is a QR code on there for you to be able to do that. So please tell us, the more people that participate in this, the better the document's going to be. So thank you for that. All right, so this takes us straight into, oops, I'm looking at the wrong agenda, City Council Reports. So I will go first. CJPIA has not met. Central Coast Blue did meet a week and a half ago. And I am happy to report nothing from that because it was all closed session. So I'm not allowed to. Five Cities Fire Authority has not met since my last report. I take that back.
You met.
You met, but I wasn't there, right? Okay, so I will leave that to Councilmember George to report out on. The San Luis Obispo County Sanitation District did meet. We had two items on the agenda, but they were pretty rote. One of them was the rotation of the chair and vice chair. And the second one was the continued updates about the secondary clarifier damage. The update is it's still being repaired. So it's not much to update there. Finally, the mayor's meeting was really, really interesting. It was the first one that I left really, I don't know if inspired's the right word, but excited about possibilities. I didn't know about this, perhaps the city manager did, that they're, how do I say this succinctly? Paso Robles is thinking about getting a whole bunch of us together, not just our county, but Santa Barbara County, to be able to do a website, not a website, a, I don't want to, a site that would take care of what's called, what are they called? PFAS, P-F-A-S, which is the forever chemicals that stay in our groundwater and in our environment. They are talking about possibly putting together a, through the private sector partnership, a facility that would deal with both PFAS and with harnessing natural gas from biosolids. And there's a lot here, and a couple of staff reports that are really, really interesting. My kid is now studying environmental engineering. I immediately got on the phone with him, and he could tell me all about it. I'm going to pass this on to our city manager. It's very much in the planning stages, but it has the potential to move fairly quickly because they already have an operator that is willing to build the facility. So it doesn't have to go through the public process as it would if governmental agencies were taking it through the process. So it has the possibility of potentially even being online as soon as 2025. So it's state-of-the-art stuff. It's being done all over Europe, but it has not been done here yet. And not, I don't remember which of the two processes, but one of the two processes has not been done in California yet, even though it has been done all over the place elsewhere. So it's very exciting possibilities for being able to do some serious environmental cleanup and have it be at no increased cost to the taxpayer. So that's my reports, and I will turn it over to Mayor Protem Guthrie.
So the rack did not meet. I was canceled kind of at the last minute. And there was no reach report since my last report from community, from our community electric group. We did have a meeting. We reviewed fairly extensively how the energy markets changed, particularly over the availability of solar. So we can expect to see less emphasis on solar and more emphasis on things like batteries, things that will reduce peak, which is not, no longer in the afternoon. It's now in the evening and even into the late evening. So they are looking at ways or programs that will encourage that. Like I say, in any kind of energy storage, they just completed a compressed air energy storage program that apparently was fairly successful and new. Also, we're dealing with what are called slice-of-day regulations, which is basically a regulation that says you have to have on contract enough power to sort of cover your worst hour possible, which is very complicated, something that I would never have even thought of. If you have a contract with a electric supplier, and they decide it's worth paying the penalty, then they will just move their contract. Yeah, they just pay whatever the penalties are in the contract and sell to somebody else. So you have to kind of constantly play a, play a little game there to keep your contracts in place. Never occurred to me, that kind of a problem. And interestingly, they have just purchased a building downtown San Luis Obispo near the courthouse so that the, their facilities here, which were kind of buried out by the airport somewhere, will now be right downtown for their training and the kinds of things they want to do. So be a nice addition to the downtown, downtown San Luis Obispo. IWMA, we have integrated waste management. We've moved back to the county supervisor chambers, which is, which is nice because it has a lot more technical facility than within, even though the city of Slocogge has the latest thing. Because of the way it works on our website, we were unable to have the meetings available after, the videos after the meeting. So that's, that's going to be a big plus because we've had a lot of complaints about that. We did do the mid-year review, going in with the counties projected to put a $79,000 ahead in reserves. So we'll probably be looking at another, probably small, but another reduction in the, in the fees that we pay AWMA to provide those services. Slocogge, we had the unmet needs public hearing, the first one. Expecting a big increase in the number of unmet needs because we changed the criteria. Used to be you had to meet all four of the criteria, and now you only have to meet three of them to get them to study. Because it used to be they never had to study anything because nobody could meet them all, especially the reasonable to deliver one. And most of those, most of the ones that they have so far, that's going on, I think at the end of this month, it closes, and we'll do the final one, the final version of it in April. But primarily, they're around busts, extending service, either more frequency or more hours. They did come back with their supplemental funding. I think it's very unlikely that they'll go forward. It actually only went forward another step by one vote. So nearly stopped, but I think we'll be having a presentation from them in April. I think I saw on what they found with the additional polling they did. And we put together at least the first draft of what are called the transit performance measures. So are we looking at, you know, on-time performance, or full buses, or, you know, the kind of performance that we'll be looking for for the next four years, kind of a goals thing. And those are my reports.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnich.
Neither of my committees have met since I last reported out. Meetings are coming up, but not yet. Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilmember George.
So I have reports, but full disclosure, my laptop just died. So, and it's not a battery thing, so who knows? But I have my report on my phone, so I'm not texting anyone. I'm just giving you the update. Okay, so Five Cities Fire Authority, first of all, thank you for coming and stepping in. We definitely appreciate your service, and I know that you came out of retirement for it. So we just appreciate you being here. Okay, we did have, we met on January 29th. We did have a proclamation recognizing Chief Lieberman for his service and retirement. And I believe the chief was recognized probably 50 times over the past month in every area of the city. So that was another one of the times. We had a presentation regarding a December 20th rescue mission. And I kind of shared it the last council meeting because it was, it was quite moving. But the, the fire department basically came and rescued a gentleman that was stuck in a drainpipe on December 20th, and that was quite moving. Let's see, we've authorized the purchase of a used tiller truck from Ventura, and that, and associated training. So that, that purchase that we authorized will not exceed 25,000. And the great thing about that is this tiller's a pretty big machine chief, probably no more than I will, but it's hard to drive and maneuver. So I don't think we're expected to receive ours, the one that we've purchased, until like three or four years from now. But having this one allows our staff to train. So that when we do get ours, it'll be an easy get-up-and-going for 25,000. That was a fairly reasonable price to purchase a used tiller. We received a $50,000 grant from the State of California Office of Traffic Safety to offset purchase of a new extrication, extrication equipment, which proves that we absolutely need it because on December 20th, we needed that equipment. And I believe we had to have another agency come with their equipment to extricate the gentleman. We approved new council, Alice Shire and Winder LLP Law Firm will be our new law firm as David Hale is retiring. And then we had a management update from our city manager, Matt Downing. Oceanal Fire Service Delivery is continuing negotiation with the county. We're just in, in conversation with them to see if there is an appetite to retain Five Cities Fire Authority services after our current contract expires. And we're welcoming Keith Agson on as our interim fire chief. And those are my updates, thank you. Our next meeting is March 7th at Five.
Not T-Bid? All right, Councilmember Seacrest.
Thank you. So the Air Pollution Control District Board met on January 24th. And they had elections, and Jimmy Paulding will be the board chair, and Jan Marx will be the vice chair. And then they had an appointment for APCD Board Rep, it's a mouthful, for South Central Coast Basin-Wide Air Pollution Control Council. And I got that, so very excited, that will be me.
I'm going to learn to say it.
They all abbreviated, but if I abbreviate it, well, no one will know what we're talking about. So they used to have, it's, involves Ventura, Santa Barbara, and Slow Counties. And it used to be that you rotated, you could see where this is going, to the different counties like Santa Barbara for your meetings. But now they do it remotely from the Slow Office, which is fine. And it's a great way to learn more about all of the air pollution issues, which there's quite a lot of them. And especially one big thing, you know, air pollution doesn't respect boundaries. So a lot of moving. They had a presentation on their Clean Air Rooms, which if you haven't heard of it, is a program to supply high-quality air filters to folks that may not be able to afford them, and yet are in situations where they can have issues with asthma and other breathing and health issues. And it's a way to have a family dedicate like one small part of their house to having very clean air. And they also will get notifications of when there's, you know, a dip in air quality. So that, I believe that's been going on for a year or two, but it's been, we voted to continue it. So that's, seems like a really good program. And there was also, there was a number of presentations. One was on asbestos, and there's an asbestos knee shap program. I'm sorry, I can't remember what knee shap stands for. But basically, they're trying to educate the public. Asbestos is still a big health hazard, and it is used in construction. There's a lot of good reasons why, but they're trying to get the word out about the dangers and how to be safe, so. And then there was the South County Chamber meeting, which has changed formats. And it's now going to be combined with the government meeting for, sorry, Chamber of Commerce. I forget what that's called. So the point is, instead of having a Wednesday meeting and then end of the month Friday morning meeting, they've combined them, I believe it's the second Wednesday of the month. It seems pretty efficient, and you can come to the coffee meet and greet in the morning. Here, the government officials, usually the supervisors and other representatives from the cities will speak, give updates, and then there'll be the smaller government meeting. So that's all I have, thank you.
All right, great. So that concludes the council updates, and that takes us to item eight. This is community comments and suggestions. This is your chance to come talk to the council about items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to step forward and do so, please do that. And you'll get three minutes, and please address the council as one body. Hang on just one second, we need to turn on your mic. And we'll, and if you would, also, you'll get a timer over there on your right that you can keep an eye on.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing me. My name is Carolyn Roof, and I'm a resident of Aurora Grande. I am here representing myself, but I am sure there are many people in my community that feel the same way I do. I am afraid, I'm worried, and just plain mad. I am here to speak briefly about the Verizon cell phone tower and how it has impacted my husband and I and our many neighbors. I'm not sure the committee tasked with the construction and placement of the tower even considered us. I don't know what's more frustrating, being overlooked or being invisible. This is my statement. My husband and I retired to the Central Coast in 2008 and reside in the Sunrise Terrace Senior Mobile Home Park in Aurora Grande. We love living near our grandchildren in this beautiful community. We are very concerned about the proposed construction and placement of a 55-foot cellphone tower at the park's entrance, 80 feet from our backyard. The plan to disguise it as a water tower does not fool anyone. On top of having this ugly eyesore to look at from our windows, my husband and I and all our neighbors will be in an area of elevated RF exposure. Apparently, according to the city code, cellphone towers are permitted as close as 50 feet from a residence. I don't see how this is acceptable. As you know, on February 6th, the Aurora Grande Planning Commission voted to deny the permit to construct this tower at the proposed location. We applaud their decision. We hope that Verizon will pursue other viable alternative sites like St. John's Church. Until this happens, we will stay vigilant. Seems the laws need to be changed in favor of the people who live here. We hope that this cellphone tower is erected where it will help residents, not hurt them. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
Mayor, City Council, my name is Robert Tromson. I've been a Realtor for 30 years, 20 years on the Central Coast, and 10 years in the Central Valley. I'd like to talk to you about the property values. I'm in Sunrise Terrace, and I'm speaking about on behalf of myself. The California Association of Realtors Property Sellers Questionnaire specifically lists cell towers on a disclosure form for sellers of real estate. The seller must, and I stress must, note neighborhood nuisances and other problems, including cell towers. Many people are skeptical because of the health risks and impact on property values. Increasing number of people don't want to live near cell towers. In some areas with new towers, property values have decreased up to 20%. A recent survey by the National Institute for Science found that 94% of homeowners are less interested and pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development long considered cell towers as hazardous and nuisances. The FHA Appraiser must, and I indicate must, indicate whether the dwelling or related property improvements are located near a cellphone tower or high-voltage transmission line. Basically, I'm telling you, as a Realtor, most likely your home will decrease in value up to 20% if you live near a cell tower. And again, if you were to look at the location that Verizon is proposing, it is very, very close to the nearest residence of Sunrise Terrace Mobile Home Park off a valley. So again, I'm against the cell tower being placed where they propose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, my name's Renee Bruffino, and I also live at Sunrise Terrace on Muirfield. I am neighbors with the roofs, and the cell tower will be in between our backyards. I'm very much against it. I know everybody wants cellphone availability and, you know, to be able to call somebody and not have to go outside and find a bar and whatever to get your cellphone to work. But I really think it's not a great place for the tower. And I wish I would really reconsider having it there. I retired two years ago, and I was really excited. And I'm the first house on the first street, which is Muirfield. And, you know, it's just a great place to live. And I have two grandkids, and they're over now and then. But Aurora Grande is a great place to live, and I'd like to not have to look at that tower every time I pull in. I thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? And seeing no one in the chambers, let's check in with the city clerk. And seeing no one in the chambers, let's check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And there are no raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment and we will move on to the consent agenda. So this is items nine, collectively nine A through nine F. So first I will check in with the council to see if anyone would like to ask a question or pull an item for separate consideration. All right, then we will go ahead and open up public comment on the consent agenda. Again, this is items nine A through nine F. Would anyone like to speak on those items? And seeing no one blazing a trail to the podium, I'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you. So I'll close public comment, bring this back to the council for consideration and possible action. Anyone have deliberation or would like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval of items nine A through nine F.
Second? Any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnage?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor V. Russel?
Yes.
That moves us quickly to item 10A and I I'll go ahead and announce it. And then we have a couple of things to say here. We're going to conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution denying the installation of one domestic well on a property zoned planned development. The applicant is Michael Harris. The representative is Richard Byrd of Slow Civil Design and Marsha Birch, attorney at law. So first I'll turn it over to our city attorney and then to Councilmember George.
Sure. And I actually think it'd be appropriate if Councilmember George has an announcement first and then I can provide just a brief update.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to announce a recusal. I own a property which is roughly 446 feet from the subject property. I do not believe that I have a reasonable reasonably foreseeable financial interest in this well application decision and that any impact on my property would be hypothetical. However, in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I'm going to recuse myself from voting this evening. So if you'll give me a moment to collect my things, I will head out.
Thank you. And so by process and requirement, we need to wait for Councilmember George to leave the room. So I guess we will send Jessica in to get you at the end of the hearing. No, I meant to get you in the room.
Oh, oh, yes.
As in go get you when you're in the room to tell you to come back out. Who's on first?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I did want to make just a brief announcement regarding tonight's notice public hearing. So we did want to make the council aware, make the city aware that we did receive roughly 1,500 pages of material from applicant shortly before sort of our posting deadline at 4:00 PM tonight. So there there was a supplemental that was posted with the agenda this evening. That includes the material and the hyperlinks. But I did want to note, the city team hasn't had a chance yet to review all of that material at this time. That submitted material is part of the administrative record. The city council as a decision making body is required to take any evidence under submission and make a determination on the facts presented. So it will ultimately be the council's decision tonight. Should you wish to continue the item or take more time, should you have questions or follow up regarding the supplemental information that was presented? My understanding is the applicant is present and prepared to present. And the city team as well is prepared to answer questions. And we did notice tonight as a a public hearing. So the council can certainly take public comment and decide after that time, should it wish to take any further actions or require more time regarding any of the information.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Seacrest, I see your chin hit the desk. So do you have a clarifying question you'd like to ask or anything?
Thank you. I actually had two things I wanted to talk about, but since you just mentioned the 1,500 pages, was that supposed to have come to us and we were supposed to have digested that? Because that definitely did not happen for me.
It is part of the record. So it is sort of presented as part of the public hearing this evening. Council has the discretion as as the decision making body in terms of what evidence it wishes to consider. And and again, I know applicant is is present tonight for the notice public hearing to make their own presentation. However, the the information submitted is part of the record for the hearing. And so it it becomes a question of whether the council, you know, ultimately between taking public comment or applicant's presentation would like time to further digest that that information. So the council really has a discretion on that.
Thank you. I guess just stating the obvious, if if that's in the record and it's supposed to be considered, there's no way that I can do that tonight. So I'm not sure where that leaves us.
So I I have some thoughts on this.
Thank you.
First of all, everybody's here and we have a publicly noticed hearing. So as is what we would normally do in this case is because we were ready to go with no continuance on the record, my suggestion is that we go through the hearing as we normally would. And we have public here ready to comment. We have a presentation ready to go. Staff's ready to go. Let's go through all of that first. And then we we can deliberate and then decide to continue deliberations as necessary. And it sounds like we've got at least one who would like to do that. We'll talk to the city manager at that time about what that looks like and when that could be. So how about we defer that conversation until after when we get to council deliberations? Does that sound good?
Thank, thank you. And then I just can maybe just have like one small announcement. I don't know Mr. Harris, but I did speak to him. We had a phone call last year just talking a little bit about the project. He explained where his property was. And then later, I think it was about a month or two later, caught me when I was coming out of a city council hearing. And again, just kind of explained what he was trying to do and kind of what the process had been. I don't think I have a conflict. I don't, but I want everyone to know that we did have some discussions.
No, and our our council handbook requires the declaration of ex parte communication. So you're doing the right thing.
There you go.
And thank you, Mayor. That's exactly what I was going to say. And then the other note is just, we do have, again, the the supplemental material was posted as part of the online agenda. We have one copy we were able to print beforehand. So we do have one copy available in chambers this evening, but otherwise the information's available online.
I'd like to see page 487 right now. No, I'm just kidding. Did that come via email to us as a supplemental normally would?
Yes.
It did.
We got it at, I was just looking, what time did you say, Jim? 4:38.
Okay, thank you. All right. So let's just explain some process here. So what is, this isn't, it's not an appeal, but we're kind of handling it as as an appeal. So we're granting the the applicant a little bit of time, which we wouldn't normally do. It would normally come as part of public comment. So here's how we're going to do this. So as is normal, we will have the staff give their presentation. Council will ask staff any clarifying questions if they have them. Then we'll invite the applicant up. You can choose whomever you'd like to have come up for the six minutes that we're going to grant you. So that could be you, that could be your, your, either of your consultants, whatever works for you. Then just a moment, please. So we'll give you that six minutes. Then we'll ask you questions if the council has them. And then at that time, we'll open up public comment after that. So anybody who's here that's that has not spoken yet will get the chance to come up. So the person who's come up first will get that six minutes. And then at that point, we'll stop that. If there's more to be said after that, we'll hear that during public comment afterwards. So you have two other people. They could conceivably each come up for three minutes apiece. There may be other public here who wants to speak. We don't know. But I do want to be clear that because this is something that is viewed at home, that the order of of the operations matters and that I will not entertain questions from the crowd. There is an off, there is a procedure to this. So when it's time to come up here, you're welcome to ask those questions as part of your commentary. But so we will, again, just to be clear about how we're going to do this, we will have staff give presentation, council will ask questions. Six minutes from the applicant, council will ask clarifying questions if they have them. And then at that point, we will open up public comment, take that comment. And then after that, it will be council deliberations, public comment will be closed. And at that time, it comes back to the council for only us to consider. So let's begin with the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Erism and council members, Brian Pejati, Community Development Director. So this is again a consider consideration of a resolution denying the installation of a domestic well. And it is staff's recommended denial request of the property owner to drill and install a new domestic well at an unaddressed property on Noise Road, northeast of the intersection of Noise Road and Equestrian Way. And just to piggyback on the mayor's comments regarding the process tonight, maybe obvious to some folks, but I wanted to lay out what the role of the council is this evening. Council's considering staff's recommended denial as part of this public hearing. And we'll hear directly from the applicant and then has the discretion to determine whether they agree or disagree with the city's recommended denial, notwithstanding what Isaac Rosen has said as well. The city is reviewing the application before it on the facts submitted. And there's no current development application pending of any kind. The applicant is not precluded from revisiting the matter and/or city's consideration of a future development application. So the property again is on Noise Road. It's here's an aerial showing the property. And as you can see from this slide, it, the property is in this location. So in October of 2022, the applicant submitted a well application to the San Luis Obispo County Environmental Health Department. And at the time, the city's utility manager let Slow Health know that the city council would need to approve the well. In January of 2023, the well application was submitted to the city for domestic use. Following staff review and requesting of additional information, staff began to plan for a March 2023 public hearing. But concerns by staff were raised during the review period, leading up to and as part of drafting of the staff report. And these concerns were expressed to Mr. Harris and then with a series of follow up meetings in March through October. It was ultimately scheduled on October 24th of 2023. And on the day of the hearing, Mr. Harris's attorney submitted a sizable letter with multiple legal assertions. And staff recommended a continuance to November 28th to allow for analysis and response. And then at the request of the applicant, the item has been continued again to January 9th, 2024, and again to today's date. So chapter 13.8 of the municipal code requires the council to consider in its discretion approval for new or replacement wells or abandonment of existing wells. Approval within city boundaries may be granted if the council determines that one, the well will neither deplete nor contaminate the city water supply. And two, service from the city's water system is neither practical nor feasible. For the depletion contamination determination, new proposals require verification of 100 foot distance from septic systems, county environmental health approval and metering for annual usage. The subject well meets these requirements. The closest city well is about 2,800 feet to the southwest. It's outside of the Santa Maria groundwater basin. It's a different aquifer and there's no interference. For the practicality and feasibility determination, this is based on whether the city is reasonably able to provide domestic water connection to the private property boundary. It should not be based on the private property owner's cost of installing service, nor based on topography of the site. Those costs can be speculative and can result in inequities. So prior to 2017, some costs to the applicant were considered. But these were only for temporary or replacement irrigation wells for agriculture or sports fields. They strictly referred to meter connection fees. They were collected at the time of building permit issuance and they're based on the size of the connection. Post 2017, well, from 2017 to the present, there have been six total well applications, three domestic wells. And cost to applicant was not considered as part of those. The factors that were consistently applied include distance from existing municipal water infrastructure, necessary infrastructure improvements, easements needed to connect supply, and whether the connection is outside city limits. So the staff has determined that it's practical and feasible to provide domestic water connection to the subject property. The parcel is immediately adjacent to city's reservoir number five. Residential water service can connect to the city owned main line from the tank. A standard water meter would need to be on the owner's property. And it's approximately a 50 foot connection to the property boundary. And then no easements or improvements to city infrastructure are needed. This is an aerial of the kind of a close up of the aerial, which shows the property in relation to reservoir number five. And then another close up showing reservoir number five in the booster station building with little blue. That's showing up, a little blue line there, which would be the connection from, here's the booster building and the water line is on this side. I have another picture of that as well. So this shows the the eight inch water line on the back of the booster station with potential water service connection points that would run underground to the subject property with a standard meter service. So the applicant has argued that it is not practical and feasible. He cited a location of a preferred building site approximately 600 to 800 feet from the reservoir, citing greater grading on steeper slopes and through oak trees and that the city should consider tree impacts through their community tree program. And then there's the, they've identified the expense of connecting potential future home sites. In terms of the location of building and slopes, those are proposed by the applicant and then reviewed by the city to ensure that codes have been met. That has not occurred yet. In terms of consideration of tree impacts, there are none associated with the proposed well permit. The municipal code allows the Director of Public Works to issue permits for removal and replacement of impacted oak trees. And then in terms of the expense of connecting potential future home sites, again, these costs are speculative. There have been no applications for structures or developments submitted to this date. The council has approved several wells in the past, including replacement ag wells, replacement sports field irrigation wells, replacement domestic wells, and a new domestic well. In terms of domestic well approvals, there was a replacement domestic well on Prince Road and a new domestic well on Easy Street. The nearest connection to the city water lines from these properties were over 1,000 feet away. They needed to cross multiple properties, private properties in open space. There would have been a need to get easements from these properties. The current application again is adjacent to city property. There are no easements or agreements with private properties necessary and it's close to the existing city reservoir. And there is also some important distinctions here between ag and water and domestic water. So for for ag water, historically, properties have been connected to groundwater wells. They involve significant volumes of consumption. And these could negatively impact the municipal water system. And they're not required to be treated for human consumption. Domestic properties historically have been connected to the municipal system. This is a mix of surface water, as you well know, Lopez and groundwater. And so this must be managed by the city. There's conservation measures in place. We have cash for grass, outdoor watering days, tiered pricing, drought restrictions, and and it must be treated to potable standards. In terms of the sequo determination, denials are exempt from SEQA. And then staff has determined that even if the, even if it was considered a project, must refer to the whole of an action that has a potential for direct physical change or reasonable foreseeable indirect physical change on the environment. And the indirect effect is not reasonably foreseeable. No application for development has been submitted. When a development application has been submitted, city will conduct environmental review on that development application. If the city council was to approve the well application, approval has been determined to be categorically exempt. If the city council was to approve the well application, approval has been determined to be categorically exempt. So staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution denying installation of one new domestic well, supply well on the property. And determine that denial of an application is not a project under SEQA.
Thank you. So let's check in with the council and see if there's any questions of staff. Councilmember Barnage, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Seacrest, questions of staff?
Just very briefly, thank you. When when you say that SEQA, one requirement is. A whole of action needs to be met. I think I know what you mean, but could you explain a little bit further what that means?
Sure, council member Seacrest. So when you look at the California Environmental Quality Act, you look at the information. That's related to the underlying action. And here the city council is just considering the well application. It's a discretionary decision whether to approve or deny. Our determination in working with staff is if it's denied, that's exempt under its own exemption. And if it's approved, if the well application was approved by the council, a categorical exemption would apply. What Mr. Pedrati was referring to is that since the city doesn't have a development project application as part of this project. We couldn't environmentally evaluate sort of other development that's not part of the action before the council this evening.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, but I just want to make sure. And it I think this is a question for Mr. Pedrati, Director Pedrati. But is a residential application normally or usually made before a well application or does it just depend? It seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions in terms of the development.
It depends, but also we rarely have well applications, domestic well applications. So in terms of city water service. That would be part and parcel with a development application, but for again, for domestic well, we we don't really. We don't really have a much of a history of domestic wells within the city boundary.
Pretty unusual work.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protell? You were on.
Fairly Jimmy proof. All right. So my question is similar to that in that. Now I was on council for a long time, for twelve years and back here for a year, and I don't remember. Ever dealing with a a recommended denial of a of the. Of a well, in fact, I don't even remember voting on wells, although clearly we we did. And we've had, what, five applications since seventeen in your experience or in your knowledge, do you know of any other? Wells that were requested that were denied at all? As you say, they're unusual. Certainly, they didn't make it to council. Just wanted to get some direction on on any previous denials.
That's correct. There's we don't have a history of denials of wells. There's been discussions with folks about whether a well. Would be on the property, you know, if they proposed a well. And in the past, my understanding from our utilities manager is sometimes when we explain. That there's city water available for the property, oftentimes they will just. Drop the request to go for a well and go to city water. I know that Shane is in the is in the building if we have questions specifically about wells, but. And about water service, they can answer as well.
All right, thank you.
Maybe the new system will be more councilmember Guthrie friendly.
So I've done my homework on this. We've seen a whole lot here. So the only question I have is really for public consumption and I'm going to direct it towards the city manager just because I asked it previous to the meeting and I know he's prepared to answer it. And that is just in lay terms. Why the recommendation for denial? Forget about what the code is saying and I don't want a legalese discussion, just really. A point by point reference as to why the city would take this position.
Certainly. So I know we did talk about this earlier and I I wish I had a photographic memory to go back and repeat exactly what I said at that moment in time. However, we do, we have a history of trying to work with applicants to get to a point where we can recommend approval on something. In this case, the rules do say you you have to meet both criteria in order to get a well. And unfortunately, we also require domestic service if if we can connect to it to come through the city. To help us manage our water system as well as to protect the public health and safety and welfare of having potential contaminated water in the future. So it's that's why we're here this evening, because we were not able to get to a point where we could agree upon serving. From city water, but that doesn't preclude the applicant from presenting anything in the future that we would evaluate at that time.
One of the things I asked you about had to do with whether or not the the straw would go into our aquifer. And we had a little bit of discussion as to the implications of that. Can you maybe expand upon that? Does that trigger your memory a little bit?
Certainly. So the the reports do say that the well would be placed outside of our aquifer. We do know that water is fluid quite literally sometimes. And what we don't want to see is ever an instance where similar to seawater intrusion from our groundwater basin. Where we start actually sucking water back into a different aquifer because of overconsumption.
Got it. Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnage, I see there's a follow up.
Yep, just a question and maybe Mr. Taylor can answer this. I didn't ask it prior because I just I thought of it, but then it it wanted to have some more clarification on it. Regarding wells that are, I guess, in the city limits, I know there's not many of them or outside the city limits. The water quality, I know with our water that comes through the city's water system, it's very. You know, it's treated, it's monitored, we get that report. That's, you know, almost hard to read because it has all these different contaminants and and what percentage there is or isn't, etc. So as far as a well, who makes sure, who monitors the the safety of that water?
Hello, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. I am Shane Taylor, utilities manager. Good to be here. It's a good question. So private wells, there are very few in the city limits, but there are areas where. We're unable to serve just due to our infrastructure. County environmental health actually oversees that. When you drill a well, then you have to have certain analysis done. That's called Title 22 analysis. Organics, inorganics, heavy metals. Volta organics, radioactivity. It has to meet certain maximum contaminant levels. And then depending on the size of the system, for example, there's. Small water companies all throughout the county. And depending on varying degrees of how many people they serve. The government oversight, private little well like this probably could be served. Once it passes its initial test, it'd be up to the property owner to assure that they have good water. All I can tell you is. We're in a situation right now, not we, but mobile home parks on the south end of Halcyon. Are clamoring to get off their wells because of contamination. The town of Halcyon is trying to get off their wells. And there the wells in this area. I can just say that there's numerous times over my career, people on that Prince Canyon. Have called me and said, Shane, can can I hook up? You know, they want to get our water. So the water quality is not the best out there. We have two wells in the Pismo Formation. We have to treat both of those. For manganese, iron and hydrogen sulfide. But once we treat it, it's good water, but it has to be treated. Not sure what their water quality would be on this well because I haven't drilled it. But there's a good chance there'd be some possible treatment, at least. From what I've seen, I know the school, Coastal Christian School, they've got a well in that area. So. But that's the oversight is county, Slow County Health on small systems like this or private wells.
Okay, thank you, Shane.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other follow ups? Okay, so at this time, we'd like to invite the applicant or their representative to come up and do their their portion. And before you begin and before we begin your timer. I'd just like to just, I don't know if caution is the right word, but. The council has read everything that you have given us up until the what the submission today. So don't feel like you need to go back through everything point by point, just to be conservationist with your time. And kind of hate your highlights. And again, don't feel like you have to spell it out for us. Things that you've already spelled out for us in other in other documents. We've been here before, so you kind of can kind of take it from there. So if you would, you see that there's a timer right next to you. It'll have some lights to catch you and it'll give you a thirty second yellow, so.
Can I clarify? It is a three minute timer, but I'll reset it so that you have the full six minutes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for at least giving me six minutes. So the question, there's some questions, there are some comments. No well has ever been denied by the city council. So that I'm aware of. Of course, everything is with with that caveat. I'm not aware of any well application that that had an actual development plan submitted with it as well. So that doesn't really seem to be relevant. The other thing is that if you go back and I've brought this up before, the fact is that initially between the very beginning and March 20th. The city staff focused almost exclusively on what the feasibility and the cost and all of these issues are from my perspective. And we provided all of that information. They haven't provided that to you. So that's a good question. Why don't they provide you all the information? Shouldn't the city council have all of the information that's available so that you can make a reasoned, fair decision? Based on the facts, not just based on the one, the only, the one alternative that city staff has provided you. And the fact of the matter is there was a staff report that was written that did recommend approval for the consent agenda. And why isn't that being presented? In fact, your administrative policy manual says that they're supposed to provide you the alternatives, all the alternatives and all the information that's available. And that's been withheld from you and it's been withheld from me. So I can't get that information. I've never gotten it, but there is no question that 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 it was going to be approved. And I'm not saying that was a final decision and it actually doesn't really matter because the decision is yours. You're the ones who make the decision, not the city staff. But the city staff is so focused on just one alternative instead of providing you all the information that's available. Why can't I get city water on noise? Why don't we extend the main long noise? Why don't we, you know, there's a possibility that easements could be granted and you could extend the city main across my properties. And then, of course, there is the water main up there. And and yeah, I can connect that. It's going to cost me $300,000. I've submitted an Arborist report. I've submitted a report for the actual cost to bore from the bottom up. And I've also submitted the information that allows, you know, the estimates for trenching. But again, we're just ignoring like the city tree program. I mean, there are thousands of oak trees, protected oak trees on this property. And no one has come out to see it. I've invited the mayor and I invited the interim city manager and neither of them chose to do it. I invited my district person to come out and see my property as well. She never even replied to me. So I haven't gotten the kind of, I think, response and consideration that you would expect to get from your local, you know, Democrat. You know, elected government. And okay, you're shaking head, but anyway, I think that I should have the access to be able to provide you the information. And that's not six minutes of time after all the time that we've taken. I've said before, the average time is forty one days between. Between application and and you guys actually voting. And we're we're over a year now and there's a reason. And it's because it hasn't been a transparent and open process. I asked at the time, in fact, after the approval staff report was written. I then got an email that said that they just that that they the city staff has decided it's not in the best interest of the city. Well, that's not the city code. And in fact, the city code that they're looking at, what they're basically telling you is that the city code is that if we can put place a water meter anywhere on the property. It does not matter the size of the property. It does not matter the topography of the property. Nothing else matters. If they can put a water meter there, then my well will be denied. And that sounds very ministerial to me. That doesn't sound like any discretion whatsoever. And so if you are really supposed to consider all of the, you know, all of the factors and weigh them. Then, you know, you would be you'd be looking at all the information that we've provided. In fact, you would be looking at the information that we provided city staff. Which they, you know, they requested from us and we provided it to them. Where is it? I don't think you've seen it. And, you know, why not? That doesn't make any sense. What are they hiding? You know, where is that report? You know, has it been deleted? It was distributed for final review. And I assume like most places you use email and it gets distributed. Well, I put in a public records request. There was no exemption that was identified that would allow them to withhold it, but I didn't get it. Anyway, the we believe that the denial of the well application will result in undue hardship. I told you it's hundreds of thousands of dollars for me to connect. I guarantee that no one here in this room has spent anywhere even close to that to be to connect to city water. And it's the only option I would have. And, you know, the other part of it, if you look at the denial, the denial, you look at the benefits, look closely at the benefits. Who are the benefits to? You know, is there a benefit to any citizen of Royal Grande? Is it is there a benefit to the environment? Is there a benefit to anyone? No, there isn't. The only benefit is that the city staff gets to exert their power and say that. Say that, you know, we forced them to connect, even though that's never happened before. And if you compare any other vacant parcel that's in the housing element, you'll see they're all simple. They already have water in the street. No one would ever drill a well. But would any of those people be be willing to spend $300,000 to connect to city water? They won't. And anyway, my last thing would be about the balancing. So there is no benefit. According to city staff, there is no disadvantage. So look at my parcel. Go look at it. Look at the cost. We've said there's there's definite hardship. And I think you should evaluate that hardship before you make a decision and I'm out.
Don't don't walk away yet. Let's make sure that nobody asks questions for you.
Sure.
And I've been dutifully writing down your questions because I'm going to ask staff those questions to respond to them. So so hang on just one second. Yes, please do.
So we do actually have extensive information from you in our in our record from Cleeth and some of the so.
Yeah.
What's not in the record that was in the staff report tonight that you provided to the city? That you then, I guess, didn't include in the fifteen hundred pages you sent today?
Sorry, sorry. And I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing, so I could hear you, but I couldn't hear a lot of the stuff that was happening before. So the thing that's not included is that is that staff report that was distributed for final review. Which approved the well, which recommended approval for the well, that's that's there. Yeah. That I mean, that is it. Everything else, I mean.
Well, you said stuff that information that you provided them. So I wanted to know what information you provided them that we didn't get. That that's something produced by staff. That's staff's work product.
Yeah.
What did you produce that we're not seeing? Because I I believe I saw a cost estimate and I thought it said $23,000 to do something. I maybe I misread it, but I thought that was the cost from Cleeth.
Can I respond to that? Yeah. So what happened?
You know what? Just for the benefit of everyone, if you could let each other finish each other's sentences, that would be really helpful. So please continue, but let's let's take turns for everyone who's trying to follow along. Okay?
So the initial estimate that was provided, we were told initially that we're going to get the well. And they just needed some cost information to justify the recommendation. So we hired, we got a bid from Larry Nash Construction and that was in the most favorable conditions. No rock, forget about the trees. You don't you don't have to worry about trees at all. No rock, no trees, no slope, none of that stuff. So just give us your, you know, the cheapest bid you can give us. Given the best circumstances, that was what that bid was. And we've submitted an additional bid that now because we know, we know things that we didn't know before, like, for example, the topography of the site. And we know that there is no chance we're getting we're getting a trench for $97,000.
Okay, so that was the missing item was the staff report and. Because the the one report is in there, I didn't see a report that said $97,000 either. Now it's possible I missed it. But is that another cost estimate that we should have had and don't?
Yes, you should have had it. We gave it to city staff. They didn't give it to you.
So that's the one thing that's missing.
No, no, that's not the one thing that's missing.
That's the question. What is the one? What is missing?
What are the multiple things that are missing?
Okay, there's an I've submitted all of this information. That's why there's so much. And some of it is, I mean, I'm not going to waste your time explaining why not all of the information is relevant. I just can't break it all up. But what's missing is what's missing. But what's missing is, what's missing is all of the emails back and forth from, between the city and myself and Richard. What's missing is the arborist report, which we submitted. Uh, what's missing is the, uh, bid for the boring from the bottom of the, of the parcel up to the water meter. And what's missing is the updated estimate from Larry Nass Construction.
So it's all related to cost is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that ultimately everything is related to cost, even environmental issues. If you'd let me finish. Yeah. What was that?
The missing documents.
I just, I just gave you some of them. I'm not, I weren't really prepared to tell you all of them. I mean, I've put everything that I could in the record. So I, I'm not prepared to, I just told you a bunch of them and yes, they're related to cost.
Okay. So in that 1500 pages that you submitted today,
Yeah.
that's the complete record. That would, that would cover everything you're saying is missing so that we can see that. Is that what you're, is that why that came in today?
It came in because it's relevant and that if I want to have any appeal rights, that I have to get everything in the record. That's my understanding.
So everything is in the record as of 4:38 this afternoon?
I'm not going to comment that everything is a record. I'm not sure. I think it's, I think it's pretty complete. I don't think there's much more that could be out there. It would be things that I don't have access to.
Okay. So I want to be clear as to why I'm asking the question. You're asserting that there's missing documents that you've submitted that, that are not somehow in the record. We are asking you what's missing and then a pile of things also came in. So I am trying to understand the purpose of the 1500 pages that came in. And I want to be sure that when the council gets to its deliberation process, that we have the relevant, not necessarily, not necessarily the entire record, but the relevant information in order for us to make a decision. So what I'm asking you is with that submission, is there anything else you're going to be giving us?
Not that I can think of.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe, I believe all the relevant information has been included.
Okay. Thank you. And does that answer your question as well?
Let me ask one thing, cause I did glance through it. Is the arborist report in those 1500 pages?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. And so the boring estimate would also be there in the updated estimate from Larry Nessar, sorry, is it Larry Nessar?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I believe we've seen, we've actually got the emails. So, um, did you, did you see the staff report that you're talking about?
Which, which staff report?
Uh, I think a large part of your concern is that there was a staff report or a draft staff report that you felt said one thing, possibly different from what's being recommended now. And so my question is, did you see that staff report?
No, although I did request it, um, multiple times and formally with a public records request.
Okay. I'm sorry. You did say that you had requested records. So it's not in the 1500 pages, but everything else is.
Right. Only the things that I have access to are in what I submitted.
Well, that makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, my question is, why are you doing this before you're doing an application for the structures?
Well, that, that's actually pretty easy because I need to have water. And if I can't get water, then I can't build on that site.
Um, and where are your other utilities connecting from?
Uh, well, I contacted PG&E. That was my first step actually. And they, that will come off of Noyes Road near the driveway to, uh, the parcel. And so that's, that's really the only other utility that's required. Well, the other one, of course, is sewer, but then I would encourage you to look at the city code for sewer and see how different that is from what city staff is presenting about water. It's also in my report that
Okay. Well, we're not considering sewer tonight. That's kind of the point is we're only considering water. That, that was my question. Is if you wanted us to consider the whole of the project, then we would have a project in front of us.
No, in fact, the, the whole point of what I did prior to purchasing the property was to make sure it would not be discretionary. So I really don't want to bring my development project for a single family home in front of city council to be approved when it's not required. So the zoning says that I don't have to get discretionary review on my project. And I'm not, I'm not saying this applies to every single thing. I'm just talking about, I mean, you can ask Andrew Perez. He's the one who told me that.
Okay. So what, I think you, maybe you missed the point of my question, but that's okay. So I'll, I'll just suspend that for now. So if you would take your seat. I have follow-up questions for staff that are related to the questions that you asked. So, um, what's that? No. So, public comment has not opened. So I have a number of questions. I'm going to ask them one by one and I'd kind of like to try and keep it corralled if I could. So the first question, I'm, I, this isn't in a particular order and unfortunately my pen is running out of ink. So I'm having trouble reading my own handwriting. Brian, let's start with, thank you. Why were the emails, uh, and other items not included in the report?
Well, so we have, so the, the applicant is referring to a, um, uh, staff report, I, I guess, that, um, that is part of our preliminary, uh, review of the preliminary and final review of the project. So with any project, uh, we go through, uh, reviews at staff level up to director, up to the city manager, depending on the project. And so those are all drafts. They're, um, they're not, not public until the final draft is sent and provided to the city council or the planning commission or whoever the, the body is, as well as the public. Um, so, so the, the references to a report that was just an internal, you know, part of our discussion, you know, there, there were multiple, uh, reports and edits and things going on, just like with any project. Uh, so that we wouldn't, we would not release those to the public. They're, they're part of our draft process.
In the same way that these notes that I'm taking here are not subject to public records request either, because they're part of my deliberative process.
Sure.
Right. And so in the same sense, and again, I'm trying to, to make this understandable for the public, that when we circulate, uh, uh, an internal staff report for review at multiple people, starting within community development, ending up at the city manager's desk, all of that is considered the, the deliberative process until that final one is, is put forth and published. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then in terms of why that's not been provided, Isaac, um, can you just be a little bit more clear about that? I'm going to ask the question, even though I already know the answer, that why is that not being provided as public, part of a public records request?
Well, I can't speak to the specific record. But the city produced pursuant to state law, all records that are disclosable under the Public Records Act and that are responsive. So, um,
Well, what I'm asking is, is an internal draft before publication considered part of the deliberative process and thus not responsive?
There are a series of exemptions that could apply to a, to a draft document. Um, and the city would have articulated any rationale for any documents it withheld as part of its response to the PRA. But I'm sure the city completed a robust process in finding and disclosing all responsive records.
Thank you. Um, okay. So, um, back to Director Pedrati. It said that the, that at the beginning, there was consideration of cost of the applicant, but then that changed. Can you explain that or comment on that?
Um, there was some discussion about, um, cost, the applicant had identified that, um, there would be significant cost to them. Uh, they had asked us for information about how much the cost would be, uh, to extend, um, our, from our water line to the property boundary. Uh, so we did provide, I think, um, the utilities manager did provide that cost. That's, um, that is also, uh, I think part of the record. But initially there were, there were some discussions about, um, about costs, just in general, because the applicant was doing a comparison, I think with, um, what they felt was, you know, extending lines to their proposed building sites. Which we, again, we don't have any information about where those building sites would be.
The question was, the assertion was in terms of a question from the applicant's presentation, that city staff focused on applicant's cost and then changed that point of view.
No, we did not focus, we haven't focused on costs on wells, um, in general. Uh, before 2017, I think we had, uh, some of the applications identified that we were talking about metering costs to, to wells. But there has not been a general concern about cost on this well.
And Isaac, I'm going to ask you kind of a follow-up on that. Um, does it matter?
Oh, um, well, I'm glad you asked, Mayor, just because I wanted to, uh, sort of, um, articulate or piggyback off what Mr. Pedrati said. Um, and to your question, uh, and to Mr. Pedrati's point, uh, no, pre-2017, the city did look at, uh, some costs related to the applicant. Those were in the, um, those were specific to agricultural wells and irrigation wells that don't use potable water. And so the city has consistently, when it's looked at domestic wells, evaluated the criteria that Mr. Pedrati raised in his PowerPoint. And all of those are within the same findings and, and the discretionary process that comes before the city council on practicality and feasibility. So the city has to treat similar properties, uh, in a similar fashion. And the city's done that consistently. It hasn't looked at cost to the applicant since before 2017. Uh, but only since 2017 has there been domestic wells. And at that time, the city's looked at the same factors it looked at relative to this application.
Well, my question is, does it matter if staff initially looked at that and then decided, oh wait, we're not supposed to look at that or something like that as part of the process?
I understand. Uh, that's correct. They, that's part of their due diligence, in fact, finding to ask questions and to try to get the information necessary to make their recommendation. Uh, and ultimately they made the recommendation of denial based on sort of the factors that the city as an organization looks at. And it ultimately comes for the council then to, to decide whether they agree with that, um, that due diligence.
Thank you. Um, and Director Pedrati, why was a recommended approval not provided? Um, in other words, there apparently, the assertion was there was a recommended approval internally and then that was not provided to us. So can you, uh, explain that?
Yeah, there was never a recommendation for approval. Um, I think that there was a, um, an email to the applicant, uh, from one of our staff members, um, that identified that it's looking positive or something like that. Um, but at that point, uh, the review wasn't complete. We hadn't, uh, completed our final review. And so, um, again, that wasn't a recommendation for approval.
Okay. And why isn't there, I, I didn't quite get this full question, but why isn't there a main on Noyes or why isn't something coming forward, coming from Noyes Road? And I see our public works director leaning forward.
Thank you. Um, we don't have a main there. We have a main, uh, that is in the Equestrian, um, road area, but we don't have a main that, uh, follows the noise, um, segment.
And so I think the question was implying, why wouldn't we do that?
Because we don't have any, uh, houses to serve there. There's not, not a large, a segment of homes. Uh, it would be very expensive for us to just pull a main line there, um, uh, really for no, for no, for no reason or for a smaller, uh, development.
Okay. And, um, I guess to Director Pedrati, are, are we ignoring our tree ordinance?
Uh, we are not, um, ignoring our, our community tree, community tree program. As, as we described, uh, the director at the time, an application comes in for development, uh, the director of public works has the ability to issue permits for, uh, removal or, or impact trees. So.
Um, and then this is a question that I wrote down as a sort of a response to the, the concern that this has taken over a year. But I know your, your, uh, presentation sort of addressed the timing here. But can staff kind of comment on, on why it's taking so long to get through this process? Uh, 1500 pages given today notwithstanding?
Well, there was, um, there was a lot of, uh, initial, um, discussion with the applicant just about, uh, what is allowed on the property, zoning and things like that. Um, once the application came in, uh, staff, um, staff processed it in the normal manner. And then once, uh, we've had, I guess, quite a few continuances since, um, it was initially, um, expected to go to a hearing. Um, so that's been, and obviously an additional time. But, um, I don't, I don't believe that the well application being a discretionary approval similar to, you know, a minor use permit or a condition, conditional use permit approval. Uh, some of these things can take time because we're looking at multiple factors. Clearly there's a lot, um, to the decision to be made with a, with a well, uh, within city boundaries. And so a lot of that just had to do with sort of the review and then, uh, the applicant's, uh, response time as well.
Uh, then there was a question about why we're not following our own code. Can you decipher that or?
And now I, I think, believe we're following our, our code.
Okay. Um, then there were a few things at the end here. Again, why is there no disadvantage in the staff report? As in, we have advantages, but no disadvantage. Why is the, the applicant's hardship not considered in the disadvantages portion?
Have to take a look at the staff report really quick.
Mayor?
Yes.
I do believe that's just a pure oversight on the, uh, agenda preparer's part.
Okay. So, um, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I do have one follow-up on that, just to say, I think to the point raised by applicant regarding the options and sort of the disadvantages that, uh, the city staff did provide the alternatives certainly, and, and tried to reiterate in the staff report that it is council's discretion to, to conduct the hearing, uh, and hear from applicant directly, who, who has a contrary position from, from city's position and recommendation in, in the staff report in order to, uh, to hear sort of both sides, uh, beyond staff's position.
Thank you. And the alternative too is reject staff's recommendation, denying the installation of one new domestic supply well.
Correct.
So, all right. Thank you for that. And, um, I don't know, this, I, I sort of asked this question prior to the applicant's presentation, but Director Pedrati, what's the benefit? The, 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 the comment was there's no benefit to the citizens and no benefit to the environment for this. Can you explain what the benefit or what the consideration for the citizenship at large is here and the, and the environmental considerations? It's kind of the question I asked city manager Downing, but this is just a little more pointed.
Yes. So, um, the, the benefit to the city is that, um, we generally have a policy of when properties, um, are developed, they are connected to water, to city water service. Um, I think I alluded to sort of the management, uh, from the city of our water source, basically. Including all of the conservation measures and, um, the cash for grass programs and things like that. In some ways, uh, the, the benefits and equity issue in terms of all the users in the city. And when city service is, can be connected, then the city wants to connect those properties. In the cases where it's too far away, um, you have to cross multiple properties. We have shown that the city would allow a well in the, within the city boundaries, based on the practical and feasible, feasibility standard in the, in, um, in the code.
And then the environment?
Well, it's kind of the same, um, sort of in the same vein, um, from a water conservation standpoint, from, uh, the ability to provide water, um, you know, the, the, um, interplay between, uh, groundwater aquifers. So there's a lot of factors in there that, um, that, that should be considered.
And city manager Downing, you look like And City Manager Downing, you look like you're itching to say something here.
I would just reiterate, it's, it's for the city to be able to manage its overall water portfolio and our water sources, also protect public health and safety from either contamination onsite or downstream contamination.
And finally, this is just for my own knowledge, because I didn't even think to ask this question until just now, it's probably for Bill, or perhaps Brian. What does the code say about how deep you have to bury a water main?
So the plumbing code talks about water service at 18 inches below. So it's somewhere in there, some people do it two feet, but that's the, that's to meet the code compliance.
Okay, thank you. That's just my own.
Can I?
Yeah, please do.
Actually, a follow up, but it was along that same vein, though, as far as the water main. I know there was a photo that was in the staff report of where it would connect to. How, what's the diameter of the water line? Was it nine inches?
Are you talking about the water line that you saw in the picture?
Well, I guess I'm just talking about when you put in a water line, how, what's the, the, the depth I just heard, but the, the size of the trench and then the size of the pipe?
So the size of the pipe that comes off the eight inch line that you saw is going to be a one inch line, and then, then the applicant or someone would come off normally with a two inch line, taking into consideration friction and issues that come down, down the line. So we were talking about a one inch line above ground, going underground that you saw on, on the picture, and then going on to the property, it would be a two inch line.
A two inch diameter pipe that goes underground, that's, that's what the trenching would involve and make room for?
That's right.
Okay, and then 18 inches or two feet, I guess. So I'm guessing when you're digging this trench, I guess I was picturing a giant trench, but from what size of a trench? I mean, 18 inches deep, but four inches? Four inches?
No, no, not four inches, it would be wider than that. But it's the size of the bucket that you use, you could use a mini excavator with a two foot bucket, and so the width of the trench could be two feet, and the depth of the trench could be two feet or 18 inches somewhere in there.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I have a question for Isaac. So Isaac, the, the words undue hardship were used at the end of the presentation. Can you address the, the kind of consider, the legal considerations from the city's point of view in terms of undue hardship? I presume that was stated for a reason.
Well, I would say it's not part of the findings we make specific to the well application. So an undue hardship might, in a different context, mean something specific, although generally, it's not something that comes up in my practice. So I think an undue hardship might be relevant, certainly from applicant's point of view relative to his well application, but it's not within our code for how the city makes a recommendation for whether or not it would approve a new domestic well.
I'm asking you, does that open us up to exposure?
Well, I think to a point applicant made on the record, you know, the, the submission of material today shortly before the hearing was to reserve appeal rights, so, you know, we wouldn't, we certainly wouldn't opine on applicant's next steps or what he's thinking, but.
Got it, all right. So that, that speaks to a potential continuance to take a look at those things. All right, any, yes.
Yes.
Lots of questions. I have a few. So there's, there's been some statements made that I think maybe we could possibly be clarified a little, especially for the public, and I'm not sure who to ask, but I, so I'll start with Director Pedradie, and you then can tell me if I should be talking to someone else. But, so there's been talk, you responded that there's a benefit to the city for folks hooking up to city water, and you said, I have a policy where generally, paraphrasing, where the city water hooked up, that's, that's a policy you try to have in place. And then you mentioned water conservation and the concept of equity. And I actually, just to clarify, when you, when you're talking about equity in terms of the water supply, are you talking about the fact that our residents using city water have to follow pretty strict water guidelines, when they're watering, how much it costs, turf regulations you mentioned, and those are when we've restricted the amount of lawn that can be put in, if at all, to new houses, things like that, because of the water it uses? Is, is that what you meant?
That's exactly right. Yeah, we have outdoor watering days, again, the tiered pricing, all of those, all of those, those different restrictions and limitations that apply to city water.
Tiered pricing for residents that are paying for different amounts of water depending on, well, I guess depending on how much they're using?
Right.
Okay.
Right, it goes to city manager's, Downing's discussion about managing the portfolio.
I just, thank you, I just was trying to kind of flush that out a little bit. And then, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who I'd be speaking to about this, but somebody brought up depleting aquifers, aquifers, and we come under the Santa Maria Aquifer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so I know in the, in the latest staff report and recommendation, I think there's a finding or a comment that, that Mr. Harris's well wouldn't, would be outside of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but then, then what I'm hearing, and I forget, I'm sorry, who said it tonight, whether it was Shane or one of you, that, that's, that's a, it's a poor word, but fluid situation where water supplies can shift in aquifers, so that is still a risk that a well on his land could potentially take water from, quote, "our" aquifer?
I think it's a potential risk. We don't have, you know, that would need to be determined by hydrogeologist to determine whether or not pulling from one aquifer would impact another one. So it, it's, it's something that happens.
It does happen sometimes.
It happens sometimes in aquifers, but we don't have any particular evidence between these two, these two aquifers, that that's occurring.
Okay, and I just, I hadn't seen that detail in the report, so I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
And Councilmember Seacrest, City Manager Downing answered that question, and one of the things he spoke about besides pulling from it was actually putting into it, it was contamination risk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to keep track here, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you. And then, for the sake of transparency, and I'm not trying to be problematic here, but there's been some talk about emails, and some emails were provided to us, which I understand to be emails between Mr. Harris and some of the staff initially. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so I know there's been, I think I understand, and there's been discussion that after 2017, I'm not sure if you're saying you've ever looked at the expense of, of the applicant, but not after 2017 for sure. Am I straight on that?
Correct.
Okay, but, but would you say it was, how to put this, it was actually a mistake on the part of one staff member, some of those emails, because it looks like he said, the city council, city council would likely approve the project once you present the numbers. I could see how that, I'm not saying it's relevant to the ultimate decision, but I, it could explain some of the bad feeling that's going on, does that, do you, what do you think of that?
Certainly.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Seacrest, just one point of clarification, too, I think, you know, the applicant has submitted a significant amount of emails back and forth that were disclosed as part of the Public Records Act. I would think of that as a distinguishable process from how staff puts together its application materials. So it's not customary for the city to include every email with an applicant back and forth as part of a staff report, but certainly emails are produced, as is the city's obligation under the Public Records Act when requested.
Of course, thank you. I just wanted to clarify what, since we had actually read it, I wanted, I just wanted it to be transparent. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
All right, so just clarification for me, we, we actually have wells in more than one aquifer, we have at least wells in the Pismo, in fact, don't we have a?
Two in the Pismo.
Yeah, in fact, we have one relative, relatively close, and, but isn't that determination already been made by, I believe, Cleese Services, that in fact, there's, well, I guess we made the determination, but based on the information provided by Cleese Services, that there was unlikely to be contamination or depletion? I mean, we, that, that's not the basis of our denial.
That's correct.
I just, just to clarify.
Yeah, and Mayor Protem Guthrie, I, I do think that's a good point, that staff's recommended denial goes through both findings and is focused on the practicality and feasibility finding in terms of why they recommended denial versus the contamination finding.
Thank you. Any other follow up questions? Your mic's on, go ahead.
It is. I just wasn't clear on what Mayor Protem Guthrie was saying. When you say we have wells in Pismo, what does that mean?
We, we have wells in the Pismo Formation.
The city of AG does? Okay, thank you.
That are not part of the Santa Maria Aquifer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Again, explaining process here. So council has asked its questions. The next couple steps of the process is, I'm going to open up public comment. Public comment will include anyone who has not spoken, so, Mr. Harris, if you want to have your other people come on up, you can wave them up, anyone else who would like to speak on this item. So we'll do that, we'll check in online, then we'll close public comment, and then deliberation will come back to the council at that time. And at that time, that's the time for the public to listen to us at that point. So we haven't given any commentary yet, we won't do that until after we hear from the public. So at this time, I'll open up public comment. Would anyone like to speak on this item?
Just to clarify, I'm not one of Mr. Harris's people. Good evening, my name is Dean Berto, my wife Pam, and I live at 521 25 Place, located just to the north and adjacent to Mr. Harris's property. Since we purchased our property 25 years ago, we have monitored activity at the subject property, as we share more than 500 feet of common property line. We're puzzled by the current status of Mr. Harris's well application. The primary focus and the resolution presented tonight seems to be concerned the practicality and feasibility, we've heard that a lot tonight, on the well permit. Since we find Mr. Harris to connect to the city water service is deemed practical and feasible for the city, the city staff is recommending a no vote. This decision gives no consideration to the practicality and feasibility for the applicant and places a very significant burden on Mr. Harris to confide in city's rejection of his well request. Considering that allowing him to drill his own well has absolutely no stated consequence of any kind to the city, yet denial of his well permit causes great harm to one of your citizens, we question whether the staff is fully informed of the tremendous construction cost and financial burden this action places the owner to Harris, or is aware of it, and for some reason chooses to harm him. We would like to believe that the city of Roy Grandy would present it with a situation that has no impact on it, would not choose to purposely take such action against one of its own citizens, and would, whenever practical and feasible for all involved, take steps to avoid such a situation. We're asking each of you to thoroughly and thoughtfully consider your decision before you vote tonight. To be clear, Mr. Harris did not ask us to speak on this behalf, but do we have any interest in his property? We're just curious by the city's taking this stance. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Lyndsaye Carstairs, and I'm one of the original owners of the property up above Mr. Harris's property. And when we bought our home 22 or 23 years ago, we, it was disclosed that that, those properties were zoned for housing of some kind, so we knew that someday, something would move forward. What interests me is the fact that I have looked at that property from above for all of those years, and there's significant wildlife that traipses through there. There's everything from bobcats to coyotes and deer, flocks of turkeys, et cetera. And there are these outcroppings of rocks, and they're very significant. We have some on our own property, I have, I have one of the larger lots, I have a third of an acre. And so not only is it a situation that dig a good trench would alter these wildlife corridors and destroy much of the oak trees because their roots would be harmed, and if you looked down from above, it was a beautiful area of photo, it's a very dense oak forest. And I'm really here because I was mostly concerned about my view corridor, and I never saw, you know, where this house is going to be going, and I appreciate all the pros and cons of, of all of this, but I'd like to preserve my ocean view. But I really think that the blasting of this rock, we're on a canyon, I can hear parties across the valley on the other side of Noyas Road when there's a party in the evening, the blasting of rock, the digging that would be required to make the significant trench is something that I think all of my neighbors would prefer, prefer to avoid on both sides of Noyas Road. We lose our trees, we have butterflies, we have migrating birds, we have all kinds of things that go through that, that, that area, and I've seen it for 23 years. So if anybody knows what's going on down there, I do, and I'd appreciate if you wouldn't destroy the trees and you wouldn't have us listening to blasting rock, et cetera. It destroys our quality of life, and I don't think a Roy Grandy wants to do that. So I think a well should be drilled, I don't want to hear a well being drilled either, but I don't want it, the trees and the wildlife destroyed. It would be a real, real shame to have that happen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Berto, and I appreciate that Mike wants to keep the property as natural as he can. It's beautiful. If you guys would take the time to come out and see it for yourself, you'd see what he's talking about, drilling a, a well would be so much better just for the whole environment, the wildlife, everything. And, and he's trying to save trees, which we all appreciate, right?
Thank you.
Hello, just taking this all in, I have no dog in the fight, but just kind of listening to it all. I had a couple of questions. So I guess there's two kind of requirements when you're applying for a well. It can't deplete and it can't contaminate, that's the first one, and then the second one, it needs to be practical or feasible, or, yeah, it can't be practical or feasible, and if it's not for the city, then they can do the well. So I guess my question, I mean, you know, the reservoir seems pretty obvious that it's like right next to his property, so it seems pretty practical and feasible. So I guess my question would be, why wasn't it like a quicker process of denial if, you know, it seems pretty practical or feasible, just based looking at the map? And then why did he have to do like a feasibility test if it wasn't practical or feasible? Those are my questions.
Thank you. And just to let the public know, when the public is asking these questions, I'm taking some notes, and we'll ask those at the end of public comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? And I'm sorry, I'm going to actually ask you to yell from the back. Your second question, your first one was, why wasn't it quicker, oh, why was he required to produce a feasibility? Thank you. Thank you, go ahead.
My name is Richard Burdy, and I've been hired by Mike Harris on the civil engineering side. I own a company called Slow Civil Design, operates out of San Luis Obispo. I want to first push back on something that Brian mentioned about, there's no, you know, proposed structures, you know, as a part of this application. I've done many projects within the county especially, and there are, it's routine to have wells drilled and constructed prior to being sold for, you know, ultimate development. So securing water rights is, is for sure something that's not out of the ordinary, especially on a property that's this size. And also, the, I think that what's implied with the, the statement that there's no structure being proposed is that somehow the cost estimates or the impacts that would be to the land are speculative. If you look at the map of the, of the property, and where all the trees are located up there at the top, along with the rocks and everything else, I think that it's very reasonable to, to state that any viable building site would be outside of that. that any viable building site would be outside of that area, on those slopes that are in excess of 30% with the exposed rock outcropping with non-sandstone and amongst fully developed oak groves. The distance to any viable build site is at least 800 feet in any direction. So just with those trenching costs, if you can go to like Caltrans, you know, cost estimates that you guys I'm sure use for cost estimates that are for projects in the public right of way and they have standard trenching and utility installation costs. You know, they range from, you know, 150 per linear foot up. So even if we use those costs, we're talking about, you know, over $100,000 to connect. If we're talking about trenching through exposed rock and the impacts to the tree, I believe from my understanding that the tree ordinance, if you have an impact to the tree, that there's a financial obligation for that as well. The Arborist Report states that there would be up to 250 trees impacted. That's a huge cost there. So the difference between, just in cost terms, are hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I don't think that there's any question about that regardless of what viable build site we would decide on in the future. The other thing is that the trench that we're talking about would not be able to be constructed with a traditional backhoe and bucket. The slopes would, you know, would present challenges and also the tree ordinance, from my understanding, requires hand digging around oak trees. So you would be pneumatically drilling with a jackhammer most likely to get through that rock. So that's what I would say.
Would anyone else like to speak?
All right. I have two things that I'm a little concerned about with this application. One part was, maybe it can't be considered, but it was interesting to me that he had called out that he had chose the property specifically to avoid being a project. That rose a flag in regards to, I've been here when people brought projects up to planning commission. So it doesn't seem like that provides undue hardship. So that did catch my interest on why that would be a stated goal. But also, the aquifer he might be tapping into might not be our aquifer. But aquifers go between towns. And I do think it's important that we be good neighbors when it comes to aquifers because ultimately, if someone's pulling water from it, you know, they need that water to be there.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one here, we'll check in online. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands. Thank you. So we've got two questions that came from the public. The first one is, if it is so feasible to do this, why wasn't it a quicker process to get to the denial? Brian, you want to, excuse me, Director Pedrati, you want to address that?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question. It probably could have been quicker. I don't know that this process was perfect in terms of process, but it did go through the process. And I think early on, the city did provide some information about it being problematic to drill a well here. The applicant wanted to pursue it and so staff engaged in that and eventually got to this process. But I do think that it certainly could have been a quicker process.
And also, why was he asked to provide a feasibility report if, again, the determination was that the staff was going to recommend denial? And I don't know what feasibility report was being referred to, but maybe you do.
No, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but we could maybe get clarification on that.
Okay. I don't know that we need it, but I'm just making sure that we do that piece of the due diligence. I have a question that is just very, very simple. And this is really what it comes down to, is I think the public that came to ask is, so what's the harm? And I'm unclear on what the harm is. I understand the decision, and I think the decision of staff is based in code and pretty solid, but my question is, what's the harm? And when I say from the city's point of view, I'm saying not from staff's point of view, from the citizen's point of view.
So I understand the question. I would still start with the code only because the code sort of defaults to city water. Right? So it says that properties within the city should connect. And it gives very specific reasons or criteria as to why this would be an exception to connect. One is the depletion and contamination, which I think we determined, at least at the staff level, was not an issue. But then there's a reason why the code states that the applicant needs to make the determination that it's not practical and feasible.
The applicant does?
Sorry. Well, as part of the application, the application needs to essentially meet the criteria, which is the depletion contamination and then the feasible and practicality. And so the code sort of defaults to, again, providing water service because of some of the issues regarding water management in our portfolio and things like that. I think overall, the city wants to be able to provide properties with city water. We don't really want a proliferation of wells within the city boundaries. And overall, I think when you have a city boundary, our code reasonably states that those properties should be connected to city water.
I'm not sure you answered my question.
You're talking about the harm, I think.
Yeah, I'm not asking you what the code says. I'm asking you the practicality. And maybe I see the city manager reaching for his mic. Matt, you want to comment on this?
Certainly. So I think this is one of those issues where I will refer back to the code, but the code applies citywide. It doesn't look property by property. It doesn't have an exception here, an exception there. I think Mr. Pedrati's point of, does the city council want a proliferation of domestic wells throughout the city where it's determined, well, to me, it's impractical and not feasible because it costs me too much money. I'm not saying that's not a valid point if in the future the council decides that's the way we want to go. But our rules are crafted to apply universally citywide. That's how we have the ability to create those rules, right? And so what's the harm is, it's the downstream effect. It's the slippery slope of, we let it happen here, we let it happen another place and then all of a sudden we have wells throughout the city. And that might be an overexaggeration or a gross misrepresentation of what might actually happen in the future. But that's the concern when these rules get put in place, is to protect our residents and our water system from contamination and impacts to their health and safety.
So from what I just heard you say, I want to make sure I'm filtering this properly. Part of what I heard you say was the downstream effect. And that was maybe, I don't want to say a poor choice of words, but that the staff report showed that we've consistently applied that code in all of these instances. So if we make an exception now for what are understandable but arbitrary reasons, that the next staff report is going to say, we've been consistent except this one time. And that's the problem. Is that what you're saying?
That's part of the problem. Or the next time we get an application and we say, well, we did it for this property. Now we're proposing to let it happen for this next property, which may not be as big of a cost to the applicant.
Right. That's what I'm saying, that we've set that, okay, we did it now, but not then. And I'm not, yeah, I was trying not to use the word precedent because it's not a legal term here, but is that essentially what you're saying?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, got it. And I should have asked this question before and it didn't occur to me until in real time when the applicant was speaking. What's the development potential on that property? I mean, right now it's not subdivided, but...
Right. It's a single family with ADUs, essentially.
So potentially under SB 9.4?
Under SB 9, yeah, potentially under SB 9. They could get additional homes through SB 9 subdivision.
And is it subdividable?
It could be.
To how?
I think, I think maybe four or five. I don't know that off the top of my head.
So if you could subdivide that to four or five properties and multiply each one of them by four per SB 9, let's call it four, that would be 16 residences?
Yeah, potentially. You can't SB 9 a project that's already been, a property that's already been SB 9ed.
Right. But if the lot split happens first, then you could.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. So this is more, the decision here is affecting more than just, and the economics of it is more than just a residence and an ADU? In terms of economic impact? I guess it's what I'm asking is, when we have a development come forward and we're looking at the entirety of a project, we would be looking at full impacts. We would be looking at SEQA, we would be looking at all of these things put together. And when we say how much it costs to, when we weigh as part of our decision-making, how much it costs to hook up to Matt's? I think, Mr. Downing, if I'm hearing this all right, this is part of why we're saying, why staff is saying, we don't have an application that we're looking at here. So the cost is irrelevant because there is nothing to connect it to. I guess what I'm, maybe I don't mean to be slipping into commentary, I'm really asking a question. If you're going to average that over 16 properties, that's a different cost and it's a different calculus for whether or not it's feasible economically for the applicant, even though we're not required to look at that test. And I see, Isaac, I see your mics on.
Yes, Mayor. I mean, I think that's a good way to think about it insofar as staff's recommendation is, again, only based on the well application that's been submitted. So it came up in the context of arguments related to SEQA and environmental impacts or potential future development that would require a tree removal permit from the Public Works Director based on construction or development. But all staff can do is look at the application in front of it. So I think it's fair to say staff's intent in the practicality and feasibility review was to look at the specifics with the larger policy goals in mind that city manager Downing referenced, which is that residential properties hook up to water supply, the city's water supply. And it's hard to speculate on future development on the site.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions? Yes, hot mic over there.
So I guess, Director Pedrati, and I didn't ask this earlier because I didn't even comprehend it until you just had that conversation, but are you saying that potentially 16 residences could end up on that property?
No. I mean, it depends on, it all depends on development applications.
Of course.
So right now, it's a single property that allows what I described, residence and ADUs essentially.
Okay. And I don't know if everyone knows what SB 9 is, but that's the state mandate for building accessory dwelling units on lots?
On single-family residential lots, yes.
And I understand we're not, there's nothing before us, of course, in terms of the development. Okay. So if, how would that work? Is it possible that this well could be approved and then the property owner could decide to apply for 16 residences? I mean, I guess you can tell me, who knows?
It would have to go through the lot split process first.
Right. Right. I'm just trying to imagine if we approve the well and then all those ADUs end up on there, could they even use the well? And then I can sort of see what the problem is with trying to decide this without knowing. So, thank you.
Right. And, right. I mean, if someone came in with an application for a subdivision and requested a well for an additional subdivision, we would go through the same process in terms of practicality and feasibility and depletion and contamination. But obviously, the evaluation would be much different with, if you've got multiple lots that are being proposed in a type of subdivision like that.
Mayor Protem, you see your finger on the button.
Okay. So I understand the discussion about the development potential, but our decision tonight is very specifically about the well and whether it's practical and feasible, independent. So I just want to clarify that. And this is a little bit of a condiment, I'm having trouble forming it. Is that might be a very excellent explanation of why we have this kind of a rule so that we can maintain control if, in fact, there is some change in development expectation on any property, particularly a big property. So I just kind of want to clarify that. What we're talking about isn't that we're, you know, that we're talking about the potential of the property. We're talking about the reason that we, that might be the reason that we have this rule in place. Sort of the question is, you made the comment that we have very specific direction here. I think that's when the problem is, that it's really not that specific. Feasible is, what was your father's term, weasel word? I think he used to say. You know, and so that's, I just wonder if we, if there's more to it than we're seeing. That, you know, we see the specific code, but is there an explanation anywhere of feasibility? Or if we went back and saw the original discussion, we would gain anything about what the intent was when this was put in place?
Mayor Protem, I think it's a good point and I think overall, you're correct that what's before the council tonight is the well application for this one subject property. And when staff reiterates that there's not a development project that's part of that consideration, that's in part because it is a challenge to go through sort of all the different avenues or approvals that may or may not be required for a future single-family home or state housing laws that, as has come up tonight, may allow multi-dwellings on the single parcel or an ADU. And so staff's focus was more narrow just about, you know, the subject site's accessibility to the city's water infrastructure and that applicant can provide additional information as part of a new submittal, but at this time, the application is for a domestic well on this single parcel.
One more question for Public Works Director Robson. Because you were with the county, the comment was made that this is done all the time in the county. That you get the water approval before there's an application. Does the county have a similar rule that says if you can hook up to a, I'll call it a major water supply, that you have to prove that you couldn't make that hook up before you could get a well? Do they have a similar sort of code in place?
If your property is within an urban services line, which means that there's a line that surrounds a community, for example, where there is a community service of water, then yes, there is a requirement for those pieces of property to hook up to that service. When you're talking about a rural piece of property that's outside of the city limits or outside of a community limits, then what one of the commenters categorizes is true. If you're out in a rural area, you can go through and get a permit to have a well. I can't recall, I don't know if I agree with the categorization of just getting a domestic well and having it sit out there. I think there is a need to have some kind of connection of a residential component to that. But it can come a little bit later, but that's kind of the county process that I've experienced over a long period of time.
So would it be fair to say that an urban water connection, I've forgotten exactly the language used, is very similar to being a city?
That's true, yes.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Um, so, um, Isaac, the, going back to your explanation, now I can't remember who actually asked the question, but as far as, um, the potential on this piece of property. So I understand what staff was looking at when the application came in, um, but, um, or the, the, the well permit, but should council really be looking at this in a vacuum? When we know that there is potential for, um, lots more water use, um, maybe not, maybe forever, it's a single family, but they definitely can do other things on the property, what if there's a couple swimming pools? Um, I, I don't know, I'm just saying, would that be unwise for us to just sort of put the blinders on and, and not look at the potential, I guess, of what could be on that property? Because to me, that is a fair question. And as I think that Karen, the mayor, was saying, that probably speaks to why the code is written the way it is.
I think it's certainly not in a vacuum and the council certainly has the authority to think through what staff determines is practical and feasible and determining whether the council as a body agrees with that determination. I think to a point, City Manager Downing made, the code, uh, has codified sort of a, a, a concept or a preference that most domestic properties hook up to the city's water infrastructure for a series of reasons. And I would say in the past, when the cities approved a domestic well, it's been distinguishable in part because there might have been multiple properties that ended up relying on the well. And so if it was, had to be replaced, that's distinguishable from a property that could be connected to the city's water infrastructure. So I don't think the council needs to think about it, um, as being in a vacuum and can consider sort of the underlying policy considerations associated with what is practical and feasible for the city. And what is practical and feasible under the code.
Thank you.
All right, so the decision to be made now, before we get to any sort of a vote, is whether you, we feel that we have enough information to make a determination or whether you would like to continue this and have staff get the opportunity to look through the fifteen hundred pages. So my recommend, no, it, public's comment is closed, that is why I explained what the process is. This is the council's determination. So I'll, I'll just begin, just as the moderator of the meeting, I normally would let y'all go first, but everybody's grabbing for water, so nobody wants to talk first. My thought is, I, I don't know what's in that fifteen hundred pages, there could only be two that are relevant to us. But until we know that answer, I would like staff to go through it and make sure that that's the case. So, um, I would prefer to see, to see this continued to a date certain so that we could, um, make sure that there's nothing else in there and hope that we don't get another one of these eleventh hour submittals so we can actually make a decision one night. Um, I see you've got your mic on, don't touch it again.
I, I would agree with that, but for another, I do think that the, even though it is very late, that we do have significant amount of information submitted by the applicant and it'd be unfair, unfair for us to say that, oh, we don't need that information to review it. I think it's great that staff will review it as well, but I, so I'm definitely in favor of continuing.
Right, I think it's, in my opinion, it's sort of built in, you, you know, if it's gonna, he's already, they've made it clear, it's going to be part if they appeal, I'd like to know what's in there if, you know, before I make a decision.
Okay, um, so, uh, I did ask Jessica this before, um, just to kind of take a look at what our upcoming agendas look like. So our next, uh, couple meetings are the dates of March twelfth and March, what would that be, twenty sixth? Um, what do our agendas look like there that we could perhaps, I don't know if squeeze is the right word, this is not a short hearing either way, um, although it is just a continuance of deliberations.
Right, and I'm going to also look at our city manager to weigh in if he needs to, but we, the March twelfth is a full agenda at this time, we have two business items and a public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Downing?
Uh, and looking at the agenda projections, I do agree with our city clerk that the March twelfth meeting, uh, even because staff reports are due tomorrow, um, that's a lot of paperwork to go through. So we would be, I, I would recommend continuing to a date certain of March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, um, and, uh, all right, so I will make a motion that we continue the deliberations, that portion of the meeting. So that, let me be clear about what that means. Public comment has already happened, the staff report has already happened, we will be issued a supplemental by staff and council will pick up right at the deliberations point at, uh, March twenty sixth.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. Just, certainly, so we're going to have a new staff report.
No.
But, oh.
A supplemental that weighs the fifteen hundred pages.
We're going to have a supplemental staff report, but there's going to be no, no public comment.
Isaac, this is.
Yeah, I would say it's in the discretion of the council. Um, I would say we had a notice public hearing tonight, the council solicited public comment, took statements from the applicant. It's within the council's authority if it wants to continue the item just for purposes of deliberation, uh, to give staff, the public and the council time to review the, the material that was submitted before it makes its decision. And obviously, as part of that, staff would be reviewing the materials as well.
Um, my, so my thought is, and, and, and as part of this discussion is, I don't know if there's anything relevant in that fifteen hundred pages. If that doesn't change anything and the supplemental is no change, nothing relevant, then we consider deliberations. But if we get a full supplemental staff report, I would certainly consider opening up public comment. But we don't need to rehash everything if nothing has changed.
Right, I agree.
Um, staff, are you comfortable with that as a, as a motion?
Yes.
Okay, and Isaac, are you comfortable with that as a motion?
I am, yes, I think, I think the motion on the floor, uh, and seconded by Councilmember Barnage would be to continue it to the March twenty six meeting, uh, just the deliberation component of the public hearing that was held this evening, uh, to, uh, review. Uh, and it's publicly available online for, for all to review the information that was submitted today.
So I'm, sorry.
Okay, that did not, yeah.
So are, are we gonna leave it?
Sure. So I'm going to withdraw my motion and I'm going to restate, okay? And I'm going to get really technical here because I don't want to waste the public's time nor this council's time and go through a bunch of motions when we really just need to get to deliberations. My motion is that we continue to a date certain of March twenty sixth. And we will determine at that time whether, well, for purpose of continuation of deliberation, we will determine at that time, based on the supplemental report, that if new relevant information is revealed, we will open up public comment, we will have a new staff report. But if no significant information has been revealed and that is the determination of staff, it will be for deliberation only. I want to leave the possibility of public comment being open, but only if there is, uh, new information that is provided.
Second.
Now, does that make sense, Isaac?
Yes.
With the two choices in there?
Yep.
Okay, all right, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Ray Bressom.
Yes.
Councilmember Barnage.
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie.
Yes.
And to the applicant. Nobody wants this drawn out. So if you want to get to deliberations, you gotta not do this to us at four o'clock in the afternoon on the day before, the day of the hearing, okay? If, if it happens again, we're going to have to continue it again, that's just our process. We care deeply about making sure that we see everything. So if you could, please do that ahead of time so that we can make sure that we can actually get to deliberations and make a decision. That would be very helpful. All right, so with that, we will call a recess, we will be back in five to ten minutes. It's not, there it is, okay. Um, we are back, this is, uh, we are continuing our meeting with item eleven A. This is an update on city council goals and priorities. Mr. Downing?
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, happy to be with you this evening talking through your, uh, an update on your city council goals and priorities for this biennial budget. And I will note, uh, I'm, I'm excited about this because it is the first staff report that I've written for you in four years. And it's the first present, real presentation I've done for you in four years. So figured why not make it on the city council's goals and priorities? So first things first, um, the city does go through a very thoughtful process in order to develop, uh, their, the council goals in order to help guide staffs work. Uh, and those, those goals end up becoming the foundation of our biennial budget every two years. So, um, we are currently approaching the midpoint of this budget cycle. So we're coming up on mid-cycle, um, which is a fun term because mid-cycle, mid-budget, mid-year, it, it all gets confusing. But, um, so we are currently mid-cycle, or about to be mid-cycle, and the city's council's current goals were adopted back in March of twenty twenty three, March second of twenty twenty three. So there are four primary goals, along with a number of other priorities and actions. You can see on this slide that here's all the goals that are listed out. I'm not going to read these for you, they're in your staff report as well, but they, they do encompass four primary categories being funding, fire service, infrastructure and the general plan update. On the following slides, we're going to highlight some of the actions that the city has taken on your goals. Uh, however, uh, again, there's a more comprehensive list in your staff report, so I'm just going to highlight a few. So with regard to funding, uh, we do have, under the first goal, we do have three primary strategies that are listed in your goals report, and that's economic development, uh, pursue potential revenue measure and evaluate potential to enable cannabis businesses within the city. Uh, but I do want to highlight some of the, some of the items that we've done. We've successfully transferred administration of the Oreg Grande T-Bid to city staff and the city council did modify their, uh, the T-Bid's bylaws and, uh, board structure. We also implemented concrete barriers, uh, throughout the village as part of the parkland program. And I, I commend the council for, uh, moving forward with that permanent, uh, fixture. And then lastly, on, on this, uh, we also did retain Clifford Moss in order to help with voter opinion polling as well as public outreach, education. And based on my very first council meeting with you, uh, as your city manager, you did provide direction in order for staff to continue that public outreach and education effort. Your second goals relate to fire service, and so you can see those two strategies on the screen. To accomplish this goal, we did, uh, enter into a new joint powers authority between the city and the city of Grover Beach. And we are continuing to engage in contract negotiations with the County of San Luis Obispo in order for the FCFA to provide fire service to the community of Oceano. Uh, in fact, we, uh, City Manager Bronson and I had a, a meeting with, uh, the county CA, interim CAO on Friday about that. And then additionally, the city has a fire prevention agreement with FCFA. So we, the city is providing fire service, fire inspection services within the city. And then lastly, I did want to highlight that, uh, fire and EMS services were identified as priorities through the potential revenue feasibility study that, that we did with Clifford Moss. Uh, infrastructure is goal number three with the three major strategies shown on the screen. Uh, to accomplish these priorities, staff have done, again, a number of different things, but highlighting that we did receive FEMA reimbursement of funds from the storm last year. Uh, we secured federal funding for the Swingin' Bridge re, uh, retrofit project. We applied for WIFIA funding for Central Coast Blue. Uh, we've worked with RCD on the Corbett Creek Cleaning Project, which worked very well in these, uh, storms that we've had so far this year. And we did begin implementing the public safety camera project, so that's up on your screen, locations of a number of different cameras, uh, throughout the city, showing the council's investment in our city's, um, safety. And then your final goal is the general plan update. And so there's a number of strategies associated with that particular goal, but I'm going to focus on the first two. That being the public outreach strategy and the diversity, equity, inclusivity and justice strategy. So with the council's leadership, staff did have, um, several different study sessions, community workshops. Uh, there was a report that was created highlighting all the work that had been done. Uh, so that goes toward the public outreach component. In fact, we have a, uh, workshop tomorrow evening here in the, in the council chamber. Uh, again, go along that same line of engaging with the community through this process. And then lastly, we do have a consultant on board to assist the city with the DEIJ lens, keeping that in mind in all of the activities that we do associated with the general plan update. However, we also know that there's a number of things that come up throughout the year that we tackle that are not necessarily directly aligned with your goals. And so I did want to highlight some of the administrative accomplishments. Um, I won't, I won't read them all, but showing, showing things like the council supporting affordable housing, uh, sixty-four affordable housing units by dedicating some funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we did receive grant funding for traffic safety programs through the police department. We've updated purchasing policies, we've updated, you adopted the formula business ordinance earlier this evening. Uh, our act for was issued and we received a clean audit. And we also, as I mentioned earlier, we won an award for your biennial budget, so that's, that's very exciting. And then on the public engagement and, uh, information front, we did develop a city mobile app to be able to push out, uh, press releases, news releases, weather alerts, things like that. Uh, I know it came in handy through the storms and the road closures that we've had. And we also reignited the citywise, citywide newsletter, so that, uh, latest edition was printed earlier this month. And it is available on the city's website as well. And so with that, that's just a small smattering of all the work that you, the council have done and the staff have done, uh, meeting your goals in the last eight months since July one, twenty twenty three. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and go from there.
Thank you. All right, let's check in with council, see if we have questions. Councilmember George, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barnage?
No questions, thank you.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
I don't have any questions, I have comments, but no questions.
I got two. Um, it's part of our goals. Was the CAO meeting regarding Oceano Fire Service productive?
So you, as a board member of the FCFA, uh, JPA, will hear a staff's report on that, uh, next week at your board, next week on the March seventh. Um, so I would hesitate to give any update to the rest of the council at this time.
Got it. And, um, on the award, didn't occur to me to ask this question. What did we do that was so awesome, besides just being generally awesome, like we always are?
Uh, besides being generally awesome like we always are, I'm really hoping that our finance director, Nicole Valentine, is going to come swooping into the room and explain exactly what that award is.
Should be seen on television, so. I don't mean to question your awesomeness because you are awesome, but what, what did we do that got the attention?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, you know what, we had not, uh, applied in quite a long time. And so, uh, we added a lot of required items that we had been lacking for in a lot of our previous documents. And then, um, our management analyst, Aleah, helped, uh, really improve a lot of our community, uh, information and documentation. So just extra info to the community.
Added awesomeness?
Yes, yes.
Got it, all right, great, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's my only questions. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item?
Hello, uh, two questions, uh, one for the funding. Uh, evaluate the potential cannabis business in the city. Um, I guess like what kind of, what kind of business, like, like farm or like a shop? I guess maybe you guys don't know like exactly what it'd be if just being open in general. And then for the general plan update, um, the second point, the, uh, the DEIJ lens. I kind of know, like generally, kind of what that means, but like specifically, what will the consultant like help the city do? Like what, like is there like a specific, yeah, I guess, maybe more specifics on like what we're paying the consultant to do.
Anyone else? All right, let's check in with city clerk and see if there's anyone online that'd like to speak on this.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close public comment. Uh, so staff, specifically, Mr. Downing, um, can you explain the cannabis statement?
Certainly, so, uh, as we see in that item, there's a number of different sub, uh, subtasks, actions. So, uh, conduct a study session with the city council regarding potential cannabis ordinance. That would be getting feedback from the five of you as to what you would be interested in, if you would be interested in, in a, in anything. Uh, prepare and adopt a cannabis ordinance if directed by city council, again, back to my previous comment. And then evaluate the feasibility of a cannabis tax. Uh, many communities throughout the state, once it became legal, they implemented their own local sales tax on cannabis products. So, uh, if the council ended up, uh, moving forward in that realm, we could potentially look at implementing our own cannabis tax.
Thank you, so the short answer is it's in the staff report, so you can take a look there. Um, so the, 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 the PowerPoint is a much smaller version of what we see. Uh, and can you explain the DEIJ? And can you explain the DEIJ efforts? And I, I got to see some of it when I came to the first community workshop. It was actually fairly impressive and we talked about it with regard to the website as well. But can you speak to what the consultant is doing specifically with DEIJ?
Sure. So I'll, I'll give a, I'll give an overview and Mr. Pejroti is here. If I miss anything, he can also add on to that. Really looking at the entire general plan update process, making sure we're not leaving anybody in our community behind, whether that be a language barrier, economic barrier, ambulatory barrier, anything like that, that we're, that we're constantly trying to reach all of the members of our community, all of those that live, work, and play in our community. And also making sure that we're looking at policies that address those different segments of the community as well. So that's a broad overview of, of the type of work that that individual does. And I don't know if there was anything else to add.
Yes, thanks. Brian Pejroti, community development director. I think city manager Downing kind of hit on the head. We're looking for inclusivity in the outreach particularly. And so we're trying to reach as much of the, the population of city of Oregrande as possible. And so that involves some kind of targeted outreach. And we have our DIJ consultant kind of review our outreach and then review the policies that come through on our general plan and make sure that we're reaching all the population. And again, looking at opportunities for accessibility, making sure we are addressing all ages in the city. There's lots of types of inclusivity.
Thank you.
And, and that consultant will be at our, at our workshop tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so I don't remember if I said the words public comment is closed, but public comment is closed. So we'll bring it back to the council. There is no action to be made, but if council has any comments to make, now would be a great time. Councilmember Seacrest, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you very much, just briefly. I'm, I'm proud of everyone, how hard everyone's worked. And I think it's really awesome that this many things were able to be accomplished. And I, I just credit everyone's hard work for that, you know, with that. And also the insight last year to narrow down the capital improvement projects and the projects in general just seems like it's really paying off. Staff are able to focus on, on fewer, but you know, fewer projects, still a lot, and then prioritize. So I feel like just really some quality focusing on what we deem, it's all important, but what we deem the most important. And I just think it's impressive. So thank you. And, thank you. And I'm still excited about the Corbett Creek Clean Project. That's been amazing. I haven't seen it, but I've seen photos and it's, it's pretty phenomenal what's been accomplished. And I think the recent storms show that's paying off. We're not having issues with that. And I'm also giving a shout out to the public safety camera program. So glad that we're finally up and running on that. I know there was problems in the past and just coming from the district attorney's office, it means a lot to people that are prosecuting all different crimes. Because if you, a lot of it unfortunately, just the way it is, it shows up on public cameras. And it definitely helps to have it documented. So thank you.
All right, councilmember George, any comments?
I do have comments, thank you. First of all, thank you for the comprehensive first report.
Comprehensive.
We've accomplished a lot this first half cycle, guess cycle is what we're using. And I'm really proud of what we're doing. Not only are we keeping our goals and priorities in mind every single day and every, every project that we do, but you take on other projects and try to fit those in as well. And I commend you for that because storms aren't part of our goals and priorities, but they happen and you have to pivot. So I just wanted to commend you. There are a lot of times we ask you to do things outside of our goals and priorities. Always keeping goals and priorities as our top, but you always find a way to make that happen. So I just wanted to commend staff for all of their excellent work in addition to everything that was listed there. All the stuff that isn't listed is also very important. I'm really looking forward to the general plan update. We gave you a very short timeline to do so and we asked for a lot of outreach. And I see that up until this point, you're doing an excellent job with that outreach, really trying to get into our community and to get the feedback that we need because this general plan is about our community. So their input is very important. And so I recognize all the efforts that we are making to reach all of our residents. So I wanted to acknowledge that. When we adopted our DEIJ policy, it was really our intent to not just have a policy, but to have a way of life, to have that lens in everything that we do, not just have to acknowledge that, oh, we have the DIJ and then let's just make that a component, but really to, to blend that into our culture so that it's, it's first nature and not, we're second, second nature? Second nature. So it's not something that we have to actively always think about, but because we do it all the time, it's just muscle memory. And I feel that we're getting there and the fact that we're being so purposeful in, in addressing DEIJ in our general plan gives me great hope that as time goes on, this, that second nature will kick in and it will just be how we operate when we hire employees, when we work in our, on our sidewalks, all the things that we do in our city that keeps our city running, keeping that DIJ lens is really important to me. And so I appreciate that the city's also taking that and making that an important priority as well. So thank you for that. Thank you for your hard work and I look forward to the next update.
Councilmember Barnage.
Thank you. Thank you for your brief but concise presentation. Appreciate, appreciate that. Comprehensive, brief, concise. So I just, I'm excited that this is so condensed. We always were doing a lot of work at the city, but I felt like we were kind of all over the place. And then when we, a couple of years ago, decided, okay, we need goals, we had all these different ways to do it and, and some of them weren't great and some of them were okay and they got better and better and better. And now we've really narrowed down the field of what council and the residents think is important. And this helps staff be able to prioritize and it also helps council when we come out, come up with some crazy idea.
They're not crazy.
Yeah, you can tell us, hey, is that goal number two or three? And then we say, oh yeah, shoot, okay. So I just, I think that this is, this is really so good for everybody. And if, and also if the, if the residents come to us and say, hey, how come we're not doing such and such? We can sort of point them, well, here's our goals and this helps us really get things done and focus in. And staff is doing so much more than this. And so, but, but what we've accomplished really is, is huge these last couple of years among other things like storms and floods and pandemics and stuff. So excited that staff is carrying out the council's wishes with these goals and the projects that you're getting done and just look forward to the, you know, the next, the next year and see what else we, we come up with. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Guthrie.
Yeah, I too will echo the impressive is the, the number of things we've gotten done here. And, and just note, we have several really big capital projects coming up and that, that have really significant timelines that, that, that might bump some of these, that some of, it'll only be three items, but, but it's a lot of work to do, to, to do the trafficway bridge, the Halcyon project. And then every time we have a spare dollar, we spend it on roads. So another project there. So I, I do, and I, I point this out to the city, the city engineer, that I think we need to take a hard look at some of the dates have maybe not been updated. We, we do have trafficway bridge and Halcyon, but slated in the same, in the same time zone. I know that's probably not going to come down that way and it shouldn't, but update, update in general, look at the, at the other things. I think one thing I'd like to see is perhaps prioritize, it's on the list, but, but really we keep kicking down the road, the wrecked building and we talk about, oh, maybe this and maybe that. We, we, we need to, to arrive at some sort of, it's, I don't think we need a big plan and, you know, hire a bunch of consultants or anything, but really start to arrive at some sort of a decision there so that five years from now, we're not still, we're, we're not still in that building. And the other thing would be the tally ho, what I'll call the tally ho retention basin. I, I do think getting that, that squared away, I know it's complicated with, with the county and the retention base may not be the right word, but you know what I mean there? I, I think those are two things I'd like to see sort of, definitely not fall off the, fall off the map here because they are somewhat time critical. Thanks.
So continuing the love fest, thank you, thank you, thank you. But what I'd like to see in the next report is a section on what else you did. Because I think that it's important for the public to see what you're doing and, and that's great and how we're, we're achieving the goals that the council has set for staff. But there is a balance. The, the, the reason we're prioritizing work is so that there is bandwidth for the, for the things that, you almost made me spit out my water when you said that storms are not part of our goals. But there are also just other things that come up. And as an example, and one I want to put on the radar is, it is very clear, we're going to have to address the cell tower ordinance. And that's going to get on this list, whether it's a priority or not, because it's come up and it's something that we clearly have to address. It's not going to help the current situation, but we know that that's an issue, we need to deal with it. And so by having these priorities, it allows us the bandwidth to be able to address the things that aren't on the priority list, but become priorities just due to their very nature. And so I don't want to give the public the impression that this is all we do. So, you know, again, there can be a section on, yeah, we did all this and here are these 10, 10 other things that we did as well. And that, that shows that, that, I think there's a lot of impression out there that there's a lot of waste in government and it is quite clear to me, and especially as compared to other cities, us and Atascadero are the two ones that run most lean per capita. And we do as much as we can possibly do with taxpayer money. And I want everybody to see everything that we do with so much less than other cities have. So those, I guess those were two requests for next time or kind of putting the cell tower thing on the, on the radar. And secondly, you know, the, 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 yes, and we also did these other things.
So I, I will echo all of your kudos to the, to the staff and to you all. Because I have only been here for a month and a half now, approaching two months, but still just a month and a half. And so my, my hat is off to all of the staff and all of, all of their staff who do all of the hard work each and every day. And I think I did kind of update the, the layout of the report. That's why I added the additional administrative items. And I think there's room for continued additions to that from, from the department head team and from others as we, right. So I think yes, we'll continue to add, yes, and we'll continue to add to that. And then I, I agree, I've, I've heard from a couple of you that we, we believe we need to look at our telecommunications guidelines. And so I'm seeing several nodding heads and so we'll fit that into one of our city council goals as well, whether it's an actual goal or whether it's an additional administrative accomplishment.
All right, great. Any further comment? All right, that is a received and filed and so we shall consider that, received and filed. Under item 12, we have no new business tonight. So that takes us to item 13, council communications. I'll look always at Councilmember Barnage first. She's saying, hmm? Councilmember Guthrie, your mic's on, you ready to go?
I'm just gonna say, do you want to formal, formally request staff to bring back a an ordinance or are you just going to leave it as part of?
Do you need that?
I think I saw majority of the council nodding in support of that item. So I will, I will formally say, yes, we will, we will look into that.
Okay.
I have two things. First is a question about council report outs. And I see that TBID is still in my section and I thought that we had decided, and maybe we hadn't, but I thought that we had decided that because we restructured it and we have a five-person appointee, I don't need to liaison that anymore. Is that correct?
You're correct. That's just a, a template error.
Okay.
When you said that tonight, I went, oh, and circled it. So we'll take care of it.
Not a problem, not calling out anything. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't overlooking my responsibilities, but I had believed that that was what was intended. Secondly, I wanted to thank the city for the $9,500 grant to the child and the Center for Child and Adolescent Mental Health. And I wanted to let you know that we put that money to good use. And one of the things that we offer every month is a parent drop-in. It is a free resource where you log on to our Zoom link and you get to spend an hour with a licensed clinician as a parent and you get to ask them anything you want to ask them in regards to youth mental health. So if you have a child that's struggling with youth mental health or you know a child that's struggling with youth mental health and you just want to know about medication, about ways to soothe them, whatever your questions might be, and there can be a lot of them. This is a great free resource that we offer once a month and it will be tomorrow at 5:30 and you can go to ccamh.org to get the link.
How are you getting the word out about that?
We have flyers out to all of the practitioners in our area who have children that they treat to offer their parents. It's in the schools, it is on social media. Any volunteers that want to help with social media, feel free to hit me up. Yeah, so we're just, it's a lot of word of mouth right now and it's growing, so.
Great. Councilmember Seacrest, do you have something to add there?
I, yes. And first I have a question and thank you for the information. That's wonderful organization. When you talk about a parent's consultation, is it, is it sort of like group or are people identified? Can they ask questions?
Yes.
You know, are they going to be in front of a bunch of people on Zoom? How does that work?
So you can leave your.
Do you have your mic on on purpose? Are you telling us to be quiet? Okay.
You can, you can, so we have a form online that you can submit questions ahead of time if you want to be anonymous. You can keep your camera off so that you can be anonymous. If you want to turn your camera on and be part of the support group, you can. The goal would be to have enough people so that we can eventually break out into individual groups. So yes, but it can be anonymous.
It's a great resource. I just thought some people might be wondering how it was set up. I just have one comment and I usually try to be something positive and uplifting and it's, it's not positive and uplifting, but I think we, sorry, but here it is.
What a segue.
Sorry, it's just, it is what it is. So we all have heard, I think by this time certainly, about how bad fentanyl is and it's a crisis everywhere. And so I just, I was up getting training in Monterey last month and someone stood up and was just talking about fentanyl and the relationship with drug gangs and marijuana. And that really caught my attention because I have just, you know, that, that's something you would dread to hear and I've never heard that. And in my years as a prosecutor, I never saw that. So someone at the table I was, where I was eating lunch, I said, has anyone heard of this? Because this just sounds very bad and I don't, you know, anyway, has anyone experienced it? And, and she actually connected me with a gentleman that's on the city council. He's also a pharmacist. And so I, we had a big chat the other day and unfortunately, it is something that's happening and they have empirical evidence in terms of they're, they're interviewing law enforcement, but they're also interviewing drug dealers that are coming out of prison and jail who are admittedly sprinkling fentanyl on marijuana. So it's just a big, a big warning because it's just so dangerous. And I just feel like marijuana use is increasing from what I'm hearing. So there you go.
I usually try to end on a smile, but that does not bring a smile on my face. Okay, well, so that concludes council communications. Thank you, everyone. So I will turn it over to our city attorney to announce our closed session.
Thank you, mayor. And it is a bit of a lengthy readout for our closed session this evening. So the council will be adjourning for a closed session conference with real property negotiators per government code section 549, 56.8. It's real property under negotiation along trafficway, including the following addresses and negotiating parties. I'm just going to read the negotiating parties. The APNs are listed on the website. Ben Dohy, Trey Etal, Romo and Mercedes Fernandez, Dan Fritus Rental, Three LP, a California LP, Mez Hansen, Rafi M., Calucian Coyote Real Estate Corporation, Land Vess Limited, Pacific Group Fuel LLC, Pearl Cole Family Trust, and Adam H. Sarawatari. And the agency negotiators are Matthew Downing, city manager, Bill Robison, assistant city manager, public works director. Under negotiation are price and terms of payment and an apology to anyone whose name I butchered on the record this evening.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open up public comment on the closed session item. We'll see if there's any. And we'll see if there's anything online. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands. All right, so we will adjourn to closed session.